Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We will welcome you first to our meeting tonight and officially call to order this session of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners as we deal with our 2021-22 budget. And tonight, several issues, but I guess specifically we deal with our special appropriations and with our fire department budgets tonight. And I know that there are many of you here tonight relative to especially the fire department budgets, and we will take those up as we come to them in our agenda. But always, we appreciate your participation with the county as we put our budgets together, and always appreciate the work that our fire departments do in serving our communities. And thank you for being here tonight, boards, chiefs, all of you. A lot of familiar faces we see this time every year, so you know the process, and we'll get to that in just a few minutes. So, you know, we welcome you, and we remind you, we are live. This is being streamed on Facebook and YouTube as we've been doing for the last year, but obviously, we have opened up our meetings, our space here, to welcome anyone that can come in attendance, and thank all of you for being here in person tonight. So with that, we will start, and our first item of business tonight is our outside agencies who are requesting funding from this budget. So first of all, is the Randolph County Arts Guild, and I believe Grace Moffett and David Gaskin are here tonight.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing the Randolph Arts Guild to speak with you this evening. My name is David Gaskin, and I am the current president of the Randolph Arts Guild. Over the past year, the Randolph Arts Guild has been continuing to make a positive impact on the citizens of Randolph County by bringing a multicultural view into our communities regarding arts and education. We have been doing this now for 50-plus-one years, and we are honored for your support through the years. We have had very specific and very direct strategies this past year within our communities. We have targeted areas of Seagrove, Archdale, Liberty, Randleman, and Ashboro for making the arts available and visible within our communities. We've impacted the financial viability of artists and art organizations within our county, and we have been a partner, reaching children within the Randolph County Schools and Ashboro City Schools for exposure and recognition in the importance and the value of art. The efforts we have been able to put forth and the accomplishments that we have made over the past year have been due to the overwhelming support that we have received from individuals and organizations like yourself. Your generous award last year of $20,000 was greatly needed and greatly appreciated. Through your funding and through assistance from the North Carolina Council for the Arts, the City of Ashboro, our community partners, corporate sponsors, both through in-kind and financial assistance, and through our membership donations and gifts from the community, we continue to fulfill our mission. In addition, we have received over 4,200 hours of volunteer support, and if that were to be equated into a financial number, it would equal about $63,000 from volunteers. All of this backing has allowed the Randolph Arts Guild to both transition how we operate and how we bring arts to the residents and visitors within our municipalities and towns within Randolph County. The volunteer hours I just noted have been used to allow us as an organization to operate within a very lean and fiscally responsible manner, using this support to take the place of and the cost of an executive director. The additional funding that we seek as compared to last year of $40,000 is to assist us in replacing some of the volunteer hours with a paid administrative support person, who, through their work, can take on some of the responsibilities of an executive director, while at the same time us foregoing the cost of that type of position. This position and these funds are greatly needed, probably more now than ever, as the Randolph Arts Guild emerges from shutdown into a very vibrant and active days, weeks, and months to come. You may be aware that the Randolph Arts Guild is the central funding arm and sub-granting source for the North Carolina Arts Council within Randolph County. We are also the single organization within our county that promotes and supports every expression of the arts. Because of that position and because of that responsibility, we actively seek funding sources and grant opportunities where they may be found. Last year, for example, the Randolph Arts Guild applied for and received funding for the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or CARE Grant, that provided crucial funding for operations and through which we were able to sub-grant funds to support other art organizations and artists adversely impacted by the pandemic. In addition, the North Carolina Arts Council awarded again the Randolph Arts Guild a grassroots grant program, 40% of which was sub-granted to nonprofit organizations for art programs, primarily for children, and included an emphasis on featuring multicultural programs. Likewise, a grant was received from the Sarah Smith Self-Foundation to refurbish our gallery, which is named in her honor, and we were truly honored last year and humbled to receive contributions from the friends and family of Kristen Brady, a teacher in the Randolph County school system through which a scholarship for children was established in her memory. And clearly, the grants that we have received from our sustaining partners, Randolph County and the City of Ashboro, have been the backbone and the foundation of our support through so many years. The list of recipients of these sub-grants is many, but I want to name a few that you might be familiar with. Randolph Youth Theater, North Carolina Pottery Museum, Randolph Public Library, Communities and Schools, which was a children's art program that they were able to put together, Rhino Leap Productions, and numerous artists received individual grants through our sub-granting program. In addition to our sub-granting role, the Randolph Arts Guild continues to promote the arts throughout our county. This past year, where and when feasible, we adhered to COVID restrictions and produced art. Projects included a partnership with the town of Archdale in October for a fall flowers project at Creekside Park. We produced a by appointment only promotion of the Randolph Arts Guild's rummage sale at the old Firestone Building in Randleman, and this has proved to be one of our single largest fundraising events. We collaborated with Randolph County Partnership for Children for the Downtown Art Explosion, and we participated in the Ashboro Randolph Chamber Christmas Light Up Downtown event, and we supported the Downtown Ashboro Streetery Event for all three sessions in November, March, and May. And perhaps one of the most important things we did last year, and the most important projects, involved bringing the Randolph Arts Guild into the digital virtual world. Our staff developed a stronger and more robust online presence for Randolph Arts Guild, including but not limited to platforms for e-commerce, virtual classes, and digital media. The shift to a virtual presence required a significant technological advance in equipment and software, and we shifted staff responsibility for one individual to singly focus in that area. And through those capabilities, we have developed online tutorials, just for example, for making Native American baskets out of pine needles, and we have sold an accompanying kit online that has been bought as far away as the state of Alaska. We received rave reviews for our promotion of four Black Americans during our Black History Month, very talented artists, and we continue to receive so positive feedback. During our annual Youth Art Month event, we had hundreds of photos of art that were digitalized and shown online for children throughout the entire footprint of Randolph County and Ashboro City Schools and even home schools to enjoy. We have collaborated with the Seagrove Woodfire Potters and have a fascinating video currently online which showcases the rich history traditions and the stories of those remarkable potters. And last but not least, we have just released Wild Art: Artist of the North Carolina Zoo. To conclude, throughout this past year, we have made significant changes in our business model to adapt to an ever-changing world, and art is adapting and art is changing as well. Art has evolved from an animal painting hidden deep within a cave to a digital photo of an image that is blasted through space. But fundamentally, these two examples are the same. Each represents someone trying to capture and recreate something of great interest and of great value to them, that most likely, they want someone else to touch, to see, and to enjoy one day. It is our job at the Randolph Arts Guild to help those expressions become creations, and those creations to become seen. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman, and we appreciate your support of the arts and your passion for the Randolph Arts Guild. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you for the handout and for your presentation tonight.
Okay.
We will take all this under consideration as we make our final budget.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Communities and Schools, Meredith Gollgren. Meredith, come right ahead.
I'm Meredith Gollgren, and I'm here representing the Board of Directors of Communities and Schools of Randolph County. Paula sends her regrets, but is unable to be here due to recent surgery. First, we want to thank you for your ongoing support of the work we do with K-12 students throughout Randolph County. It is vital for our mission to continue, and we are truly grateful for your financial support. We are here to report that our staff has been fully engaged in schools, in the schools they serve during the 2021 school year, and has been able to bring 182 Tier One Large Group Services to 13,327 students this past year. Among these were staff classroom academic support, behavioral interventions, enrichment and motivation, life and social skills, and physical health support. We were able to do this with the partnerships we enjoy with our local school systems and with some exterior partner support. Many of our services were provided remotely when school closures required that mode of support, and particularly for external partner support. We have truly missed our volunteer mentors this year, as they typically provide direct service to nearly 300 students every year. That hole has only been partially filled by our capable staff, so we are hopeful for the time that volunteers will be able to reengage in local schools. In spite of having no volunteers on campus, our staff was able to provide 261 Tier Three One-on-One Supports this year and 351 Tier Two Small Group Supports. Our Backpack Pal Program served 565 students by the end of May, and our second Backpack Pal Summer Delivery Program begins this week and will serve a record 172 students through direct delivery of weekend food to their homes. This number is up over 65% from last summer. In summary, we are grateful for the support of the community, our amazing donors, granters, volunteers, and of course, the county leadership for the support they have given our agency in previous years, but especially in the past year, when we were faced with the most difficult challenge I believe any of us have faced during our lifetime. We continue to be committed to aggressively seek funding and sustainable resources so that our mission is strengthened and continued in support of students in our Randolph County communities. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
May I ask?
Thank you.
Yes.
Is the mentoring done, for the most part, in school?
Yes, for the most part.
Okay.
I believe what normally happens is they eat lunch on a weekly basis with the student. You're paired with a one-on-one student that you mentor the entire year.
Okay. All right. I thought it sounded like it was, but I wanted to ask the question for clarification. And of course, we know last year was...
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
All right. No, that was it. Thank you.
Was your mentoring done virtually?
I would have to consult with Paula on that. I'm not 100% sure. As far as, I would have to consult with Paula. I'd be happy to have her get back in touch with you.
But you changed the way you do things relative to the official pandemic?
Yes. We've been doing things virtually. Our reality store, which we normally hold in person, was done exclusively online, virtually.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
Senior adults. Mark?
Chairman, for our county Commissioners and senior county staff, it's again a pleasure to be with you for our request of financial assistance for the new fiscal year 2021-22. You have, I think, there in your screens, just a short presentation. I do want to take just a moment and remind you of our mission statement, which is to empower adults aged 50 and over in Randolph County toward a life of personal independence, healthy aging, social connection, and lifelong learning. In the middle of the worst pandemic that any of us have faced in our lifetimes, I believe we've still done a good job of meeting those four goals within our mission statement, even though our centers have been closed for the last 15 months. You'll see that for fiscal year 21-22, we are requesting a flat amount, or the same amount that the Commissioners approved for last year, $302,585. We were very fortunate that you supported an increase last year, which was our first in six years, but we are requesting a flat level of support for the new fiscal year. One of the things that was extremely important during the COVID pandemic was the fact that Randolph Senior Adults was able to participate in seven different CARES Act stimulus programs, everything from the Paycheck Protection Program through the current Technology Grant Program that's underway today. I would point out two things about the CARES Act. First of all, as some of you know, on the transportation side, the North Carolina Legislature last year did not fund the Rural Operating Assistance Program, which accounts for almost a half a million dollars of our ARCAT's funding, or about 50% of our trips that we take in a normalized year. Having the CARES Act for transportation allowed us to continue to deliver clients and customers to their medical appointments, employment, wherever they needed to go. We are under the impression that in the preliminary budget for the new fiscal year, the legislature has put those funds back in, but we'll wait and see what the final budget produces. I would also mention the Technology Grant at the bottom of your page. That's the one that we're probably the most excited about, is that we receive funding to purchase either Samsung Android or Apple iPad tablets for all four of our senior centers, and we have started conducting basic computer skills class for senior adults out of all four of those, going very, very well. We started the first one at the end of May, beginning of June. We're already now booked through our third set of classes that will come a little later. And if you think about this, if you go back 15 months to the onset of the pandemic, if we'd had a number of our senior adults' clients tech savvy, we could have done so much more on our own website to interact with them when they're stuck at home during the pandemic. So we're very excited about that program, and we'll continue offering those classes after the official funding ends at the end of September. As you will recall, we closed all of our centers on March 18th of 2020, so how did we spend our funding last year if our centers were closed? First of all, ARCAT's missed zero days of providing transportation to clients within Randolph County. We were able to do this through personal protective equipment and social distancing. We simply limited the number of people that we would put on a van, and still were able to transport clients all around. The most important trips that we take are dialysis clients that go to their treatments three days a week, and we've been able to do that every single day. We've not missed a day since we closed our centers for COVID. In addition, our Information and Options Counseling, which provides senior health insurance information and caregiver support, instead of meeting with clients in person, we've worked through the telephone and online to provide service to those clients. And I would mention, through the Senior Health Insurance Program, our small, two-person team at Randolph Senior Adults ranks number two in the state of North Carolina in the number of clients served, and number 12 in the amount of dollars that we save by getting them into the right program. What was right for you under Medicare last year may not be right for you this year. If you look at the Piedmont Triad region, of which we're a member, we finished number one in both categories in the Piedmont Triad region. And then, we've talked a little bit about this in the past, but as you look at our meal support, you know that we modified our deliveries from a daily hot meal to 10 frozen meals every other week. Upon the one-year anniversary of our being closed, March 18th of 2020 to March 18th of 2021, we had served 101,000 meals in Randolph County. To put that in perspective, the largest meal service year we had ever held, we served 97,000 meals. So we outstripped that volume by 4,000 during a pandemic. By the end of June, we will have served over 125,000 meals in Randolph County. And the good news is, is that through the support of the Randolph County Public Health Department, we will be reopening all five of our centers on July 1st. And for those folks who are ready to come back to the centers, and for our Meals on Wheels deliveries, we will move back to a daily hot meal for our clients. So I want to thank you for what you have done for us for many, many years, what you continue to do for our community and our county. Happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Okay, I have one.
Yes.
Oh, we should be sorry, guys. I just thought about this. I've never thought to ask it. With transportation services, are they, is this service available for seniors that live on a campus in independent housing?
Yes. Actually, first of all, let me clarify. ARCAT's transportation is available to any Randolph County resident 18 years of age and older. If you have a guardian that's 18, or you can ride younger if you have someone that's an adult to ride with you. So first of all, it's open to anyone. If you're 60 years of age and older, you do not pay to ride in the community. Now, if you go out of county to Baptist Hospital or Moses Cone for an appointment, there is a small charge. But yes, if someone lived at an independent living facility and needed transportation to a doctor's appointment or whatever, they make their appointment with ARCAT's, just like anyone else. We'll pick them up, come get them when their appointment's over, and take them home.
Okay. It's good to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
A lot of this is pass-through funds, state and federal, for your programs?
We do. Almost all of our ARCAT's funds are through state and federal DOT. We were here last week talking about the Federal Block Grant, which you guys approved, and then the Rural Operating Assistance Program, also through transportation. If it's back in the budget, it'll be a pass-through to county to us as well. We also receive funding from the United Way of Greater High Point, United Way of Randolph County, and then several of the municipalities here in Randolph County, in addition to Randolph County.
Right.
All right. Thank you for your consideration and your support.
Okay, our next is OE Enterprises. I think this before has been ran vocational, so please come forward. Let's see. Margaret?
Yes.
Margaret Samuels?
We've got help from a few individuals, so thank you. Thanks, you guys.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Samuels, and I'm the Director of OE Enterprises. It's wonderful to see you again. On behalf of the clients, the staff, and the Board of OE, we cannot thank you enough for your funding this past year, and appreciate you considering funding for this year. OE started our collaboration with Randolph County on January 2020, and I just have to say, what a year it has been, a completely unexpected year. I'm sure not unlike everyone else, but we were able to keep our doors open. We did not close. We kept the facility open. We kept individuals working, and more importantly, we were actually able to expand some of our production contracts and work to ensure that everybody could continue receiving a paycheck. We also focused on basic needs and assistance with many of our clients who had to navigate a new world of PPE-wearing and ensuring that they could be safe and their families could be safe. Our community clients, our clients that we collaborate with vocational rehabilitation on, also continued to work, and we were able to assist in finding placements for people to work at FedEx, The Table in downtown Ashboro, Randolph Senior Association, and several other businesses and companies throughout Randolph County. I have tonight with me Casey, our program staff, our wonderful program staff, and Angela and Emily, and if you'll bear with us, they're just going to share with you a little bit about what's been happening this past year.
My name is Casey Calacut. I've been a part of what was formerly known as Randolph Vocational Workshop, which is now OE Enterprises, for about 14 years now. I've been in the classroom teaching there. I've been working out in the community, job coaching with other individuals. Now, I'm in-house. I also help run the greenhouse that we have there. But I was born and raised here in Randolph County, and that's just a little bit about me.
Thank you.
My name's Angela Holder, and I'm very thankful to be able to work up at OE Randolph Workshop. I really enjoy doing it because I love labeling boxes, wrapping wires, helping friends label boxes, and enjoy folding papers and wrapping black screws and taping them up, putting them in boxes, and enjoy planting seeds and growing them in the greenhouse and selling them. I make minimum wage, and I'm very thankful. I really enjoy helping other clients do their jobs. I have made a lot of friends, and I really enjoy being around my friends because it makes me so happy. And I appreciate the supervisors who really help me because they help me out a lot and help me to understand and make sure I do my jobs right, because that's a very big help. And I've worked at OE about 10 years now, and I'm very happy up there and never plan to leave. And my most favorite job is labeling boxes. It's the best workshop I've ever found.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for working. Thank you for working.
My name is Emily. Emily, I love labeling boxes, doing wires, labeling boxes. Packaging bumpers. Doing screws, black screws. Working from eight to four, minimal wages. My favorite job, making boxes. Greenhouse work, planting pretty flowers. Believe in to see them. I enjoy this because. I like pretty plants. Giving them to other people. Building friendship of their. Others at work and helping other people.
Thank you so much for that. Again, we can't thank the Randolph County Commissioners for all of your support this past year. It has again been invaluable through this tough year and it really helps make a difference in everybody's life. And I am happy to take any questions and I also have a handout.
Margaret, how about transportation for these folks? How do they get to and from?
Absolutely. Several different ways. I was listening to the our CATS presentation because several of our clients and employees come through our CATS. Some people actually, the group home brings them or they, a family member or caregiver. Am I getting that right, Casey? How many people travel on our CATS, if I can ask? Do you want to come up for one second?
Probably around seven or eight of our clients do travel our CATS, so.
And they, as I said, just fantastic during the past year, particularly with COVID ensuring that everybody was protected and safe. So we thank them very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any collaboration with the cooperative extension through the Master Gardener Program? With, you know, with growing the plants and the greenhouse and everything?
I'm going to let Casey answer that. She is a phenomenal staff member and our greenhouse is one of the most popular things. And I didn't even talk about the plant sale. If you could talk a little bit about that while you ask.
Actually, I have took the Master Gardeners Program at the extension. And before being left, we had talked about doing some kind of collaboration with our clients and with the staff over there at the agency. But I have been in touch with the new agent and we're hoping maybe we can get something going with our greenhouse. We also have raised bed gardens. So if, you know, we could get some volunteers over there to, you know, to help us with their expertise, that kind of thing. But I did actually take the course and use the knowledge that I gained from that course and helped teach these clients some of the knowledge that I gained as well from that course. But we, and we also have a plant sale in the spring and in the fall. It's generally open to the public. And we did a sale this spring. We're planning on doing one this fall. We didn't do one last fall due to the pandemic. But we did do a sale this spring, so.
Okay, excellent. And I'd like to thank the young ladies that came with you. I think you inspire us all to be more appreciative of the opportunity to work. So thank you.
Thank you so much and.
Don't you serve in other areas too?
I'm sorry. Yes, actually. We started out in Orange County almost 45 years ago. And then about 16 years ago, we answered an RFP when Vocational Trades of Alamance was leaving the LME. And now we get to operate in Randolph. And again, we can't, Randolph County is a wonderful county, has been so welcoming and so kind in everything we do. So we thank you for that as well.
Well, with the current situation, people trying to find, get folks to work, it's great to see these young ladies come in here and tell us how happy they are to be able to work.
Yes. It makes, and thank you so much for your.
That's a message for everybody.
Yes. Thank you so much for your support. It's so important to have everybody working. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Habitat for Humanity, Wanda Peg. I believe this is the first request from Habitat. How are you, Wanda?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good to see you again.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I also want to thank a few members of my Board of Directors who happen to be here. They didn't come just for me maybe or for Habitat. They may be here for other reasons also, but I appreciate them being here. If it's okay with you, I just assumed not to talk about last year and how this has affected our construction program, the opportunity for volunteers, which we can't operate without, the rising cost and availability of construction materials and everything else, or the pandemic. But I would like to talk to you a little bit about our efforts to overcome the past year and to get back to helping families who need a decent place to live. The families we work with fall into the 30% to 60% median income of the county. Families chosen for the Habitat Program must have lived in Randolph County for at least a year. They live in inadequate housing. They're willing to work sweat equity. They have an income that will allow them to make their mortgage payment, but also pay their other bills. These working families just need a hand up. So partnering with Habitat helps them build strength, stability, and self-reliance, along with building their home. This is an asset. And maybe that's the biggest difference between our organization and others is that these families obtain an asset. This asset can be an avenue for them to move out of poverty. We built 43 homes in Randolph County. 28 of those homes are outside of the city of Ashboro. We currently have 10 families in our program. We get applications daily, families who need a decent place to live. We plan to move four families into homes this coming fiscal year. We only closed one house last year. We had several under construction. We curtailed construction for several months. We're slowly letting people back on the site. We have four houses that we hope to close this coming fiscal year. We need your financial support to build our community. We partner with North Carolina Housing Finance Agency that they give us some HUD money for every house that we build. I say they give it to us. What they do is they loan the money to the family and it's paid back 0% interest through their mortgage payments. So it's not money that they just give us. It has to be repaid. We have fundraisers. We have homeowners paying their mortgage and we hold the mortgages for our houses. And then, of course, we have our restore. This is a new request. We're asking for $40,000, which represents less than half of what it would cost for us to build a three-bedroom Habitat home. We have consistently built three or four houses a year for the past several years. We would like to increase our construction program and serve more families. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but thank you for considering our request.
Wanda, this request, as you mentioned, it is a first-time request. Do you have a specific use for the money or is it just going into the hopper to help build another house?
The money will go toward buying construction materials for the homes.
What sort of staff do you have?
We have, I'm the only full-time staff. We have three other part-time employees, a volunteer coordinator, a family selection coordinator, a mortgage servicing person. We have four more. I forgot. We hired an extra person. And we have a finance hall. All of those folks are part-time.
Did your fundraising fall off last year?
Oh, yes. We did have our celebrity breakfast. We moved it from, we usually had it in October, we moved it into April of this year. And it was, it went very well. But that's about the only fundraiser we were able to do. Then we had a shortened golf tournament that Sam Ramsey does for us from Chick-fil-A. But other than that, we didn't do any fundraising.
Okay.
And if I remember correctly, with the breakfast, you had limited the number of participants.
Yes, ma'am, we did.
To be in compliance.
In compliance with how many people we could, we socially distanced the best we could. And wore masks.
Now, is your golf tournament your premier pretty much fundraising event?
Thank you. We can't thank Sam Ramsey enough for doing that for us. He's been great. He's been a supporter of Habitat for a long time. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
Boys and Girls Club, Floyd Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Floyd Johnson. I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater High Point. We have one location here in Ashboro and I wanted to talk just a few minutes tonight about that location. Wanted to come before you this evening and just thank you for your support for our organization. As many of you know, we've been serving youth in Ashboro for many years in many different locations. We are currently serving youth at 221 Cliff Road in Ashboro and that's the first DNR church. We're using the bottom floor of the church there. And our organization recently had been, up until last month, we'd been serving kids full days. When the school was out, we were open, doing remote learning, the distance learning at our location there. We upped our Wi-Fi to serve more kids that way, to have more on the bandwidth. And we coordinated with Ashboro City Schools to serve the kids there. And that was started from last June up until toward the end of April when the kids went back into school. We have right now, we've increased our membership over the last, when we closed the books last year, we had 119 youth here in Ashboro. And we ended up, so far today, at the same time, we're up to 159. So we've increased it by 40 over the last, the last time, same time that last year. And we think a lot of it is from the work that we've been doing. We're working with our local board here to identify plans to, over the next four years. By 2025, we have a goal to serve over 500 youth across Randolph County. So again, we just wanted to thank you for your long-term support and we look forward to serving more youth across the county through strategic collaborations. Any questions?
Are you on site? You're from High Point.
Yes, sir.
Are you on site? Who is on site, I guess is the right.
His name is Caleb Hughes. He's our unit director down here.
Because you've had some turnover.
Yes, sir. He's been with us, we hired him right before the pandemic started last year. So he's been with us for the last year.
Right.
I know you were looking to expand over in the Ramseur area.
Yes, sir.
How is that progressing?
It's going well. We got authorization to use their town hall for, and that's part of our work with Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. We received some money there and we set up a satellite location there and had some, held some classes there. And they've been real accommodating for us at that location. And so we're going to ramp that back up with the school year comes as we recruit kids there. And we've also had some discussions with the Town of Randleman too. And they're interested in potentially helping us out with some space there as well.
What's the average age or the age range that you're currently serving?
So the majority of our kids will be up from, anywhere from, I think the biggest block is about second grade up to about fifth grade right now. So it's primarily elementary. And that's a great question because one of the things we want to do is as we grow our numbers, we want to have at least a third of our kids be, we want to target teenagers and have something for middle school and elementary, or middle school and high school kids to do as well. So that's one of the things we want to do.
How are you going to entice them to come?
So we're going to, we'll look for more space and we'll have dedicated space just for them and do, for instance, we'll talk about some job programming, some work on them for skills like that. We will, coding, where the kids like the technology. So we'll have, you know, some ramped up tech that they can use. And then, of course, video games, those kind of things. So make it, really target it more toward that. The other thing we're considering to do is look at altering our hours for teens. You know, be later, open later on Friday evenings or be open later or even open on Saturdays. Right now, we're only open Monday through Friday.
I know that, I know that you guys were able to get a van with money from.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, from the JCPC. How is that used? Because, I mean, reading the report, you talked about the school system providing transportation. So if we take out the unusual circumstances for last year and then look at what your typical year looks like, I mean, I can see where out in the county, Ramseur, Randleman, but in Ashboro, how is that used?
So that's a great question. So the new bus that we're, will really support our JCPC program. It'll go out into the county, pick up either to drop off and take home for that one. Our current bus, so we'll have two buses down here now. And in our current bus, we run to the middle schools and pick up there because they don't transport over to our site. So the schools, the elementary school, and we're right across the street from Lindley Park. So those kids just walk. But it's primarily for the middle schools right now and the high schools that we provide transportation.
Good information.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Shelter of Hope, Paulette, Andy.
Good evening. Like to thank y'all for the help that you have done in the past. We did ask for a little bit of an increase this year. Because we're like everybody else. This pandemic has just about done us in. We have managed to keep the doors open. We managed to make it through COVID with not one single case of COVID in the shelter. So we have worked hard to make that happen. We still, everybody that's there is volunteers. There are still no paid staff. So every bit of money that comes in goes to helping these guys better themselves, riff over their head, a hot meal in their stomach. Are there any questions?
How many are you serving now?
We have space for 32, but I think right now we have about 26 there.
Can you kind of identify what you do, these are guys that are on the street?
These are guys that are on the street. And most of them, when they come in, a lot of them don't even have ID. So we have to start working towards getting an ID, make sure they have a social security card. Then we can start working with them to get them a job where they're making money. We do, we have started charging them rent. We give them two or three weeks to find a job. If they can pay rent for a few months, that gets them in a habit of making a payment. So hopefully with that, when they do move out, they can stand on their feet. And the only time we'll see them is if we run into them at the grocery store and not back at our doors.
What I'm getting at is I think a lot of times, maybe people in the area don't know exactly what your intent is. And it seems. And it seems to me, and I'm gonna tell you what I think.
Okay.
You can tell me if I'm wrong. It looks like your intent is getting these guys off the street.
Yes, sir.
Getting them clean for drugs.
Yes, sir.
Clean for alcohol. That's your intention.
That's our intention.
Now, you get them, you try to get them out to get work.
Yes, sir.
Like you say, you charge them something for living there. But there, again, they can eat there.
Correct.
And they get to sleep there.
They do.
That type of thing. So your intent is to try to.
Rehabilitate.
Rehabilitate. That's the word I was trying to think of. Rehabilitate them.
We do, and we do get them over, we have partnered up with Daymart. So everybody that comes in goes to Daymart for an evaluation. That way, if they have an issue, that's something that we can't deal with at the shelter, Daymart sets them appointments to come back there to continue to help rehabilitate.
And you have certain criteria as to drug use or alcohol use?
Absolutely. We drug test periodically. We breathalyze every night. Now, we're not going to put them out for using drugs or using alcohol. They're going to do that for themselves. They're going to have a choice if it's continued pattern. They're going to have to go to rehab, or they're going to have to leave the shelter. But that would be their choice.
How, how, how do you make them make that choice? Kind of try to follow.
Well, after, we work with them. I know there was one guy that we actually worked with for about three months, because he was a pretty bad addict. And so we finally just said, look, you can't stay here if you're going to continue to do drugs. So you're going to have to go to rehab. We sent him, I took him to Burlington myself, to that rehab center there. From there, he went to the one in Durham, I can't think of it. Butner. He stayed there for about three months.
Is it the Durham Rescue Mission?
No, it's, it's in Butner. I can't think of the name of it right now. But he stayed there for about three months, and when he came back, he was doing good, he worked good, we didn't have any more issues. And he finally moved, you know, got him a place and moved out.
And is he, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, he's still clean today.
So you, you did your job?
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons, I might ask you, or I'm gonna make a statement about, yesterday, I was out here on, at the Food Line Store on 49. And I'm coming at the, coming up to the stoplight, and a man's sitting there, squatted down on the corner with a sign that said, please help. So, any of you that know my wife, she says, you gotta help him, give him some money. I said, that's what he's wanting, money. I said, you know, she said, what would Jesus do?
That's right.
I said, I don't know exactly what Jesus would do. I said, I'm gonna take you home, and I'm gonna come back, and I'm gonna give him an option. So I came back. I left my wife at home, I came back. The man was still sitting there in the sun, squatted with a sign, please help, anything. So I stopped, pulled up there, I said, sir, can I help you? He said, yeah. I said, wait a minute, I'm going to help you. I said, you need help. I said, have you ever heard of Shelter of Hope? He said, yes. I said, then, I want to take you to the Shelter of Hope. He said, no, thanks. He said, I said, what do you mean? I'm gonna take you to a place you can go that will help you. He said, no. I've been there three times, and they turned me out. I said, well, I'm gonna take you. He said, they won't let me. I said, I will take you, they will let you. He said, no. I said, are you telling me standing there that you refuse for me to help you? He said, yes, I refuse to go back there.
And that's probably the, one of the ones that we've had to put out, because he will not help himself. We've got two or three that we just will not let come back, because they bring, constantly bring drugs in.
Well, again, I understand your position, and I understand your point. It dawned on me that you're trying to help these guys understand what they're supposed to be.
Right.
And it also pointed to me that this guy didn't want help.
And you can't help somebody that don't want help.
Right, because I offered him a chance to have help. But I wanted to point that out to you. That's, that's why I ask you, how do you go about doing what you do?
We had a guy that, he had five brothers that lived in Greensboro. And he wouldn't stay at the shelter. He'd been there three different times. We wouldn't let him drink on the property. So he goes back to Greensboro. All of his brothers is on retirement or disability. They're drawing a monthly check. They have the same corner, I think it's Gatewood and Menden Hall. There's a red roof motel right there. They'll stand on the corner. They go to the motel, get a room. They lay drunk all the time. The one that was at our shelter, he died, died with alcohol poisoning. So if they don't want help, we can't help them. But if they do want help, that's what we're there for, is to help.
And that's why we need to help.
Yes.
Do you have certain companies that will hire your?
We do. About all of the temp agencies around us, if they've got openings, they will call.
Where?
The temp agencies. They will call, begging for guys to come up there. And if we're not working, we get them up there. If they can pass the drug test, if they can pass the background check, most of them can go to work. We do deal with that a whole lot. The backgrounds are so bad that nobody will hire them.
All right. Other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Family Crisis Center, there?
Good evening. I hope you all are doing well. First, I just want to say how I appreciate, am I really loud?
It's okay.
It sounds like it's just really loud.
We get it the other way. This is okay.
I want to thank you all so much for your support over the years. I appreciate the increase last year. The great thing about your support is it gives us support from other people, because your money is used as a match for federal grants. But not only that, you all wrote a letter of support. This year, one of our funders, federal funders, became competitive. And it has not been competitive in the past. And they requested that we have letters from community partners, as well as other funding sources. Well, we did get that grant, so I'm really excited about that. And yours, of course, was one of the letters that we submitted, so I appreciate that. I want to talk to you for a minute about your investment in the Family Crisis Center, and how that has paid off this year, even through a pandemic. Because I'm really excited. When I looked at these numbers, I got really excited. Of course, I'm excited a lot, as you can tell. But last year, we gave you the report that we had completed 700 therapy sessions. And our therapy, obviously, like most therapy sessions, is in person. Well, then, we had this pandemic come through. So we reported to you that we had done 700 therapy sessions for last fiscal year. Well, this fiscal year, even through a pandemic, we had 713 therapy sessions. So, and of course, some of those were virtual through telehealth, but we did continue on with business, as usual during our pandemic. The shelter did have to function at 50% capacity, so that we could put in parameters and keep everybody safe, and everybody socially distanced. We serve, though, at our offices in Archdale and Ashborough, just so that you're aware, we cannot close down. Unfortunately, domestic violence and sexual assault and trafficking is going to continue, as is child abuse, pandemic or no pandemic. I don't know if you all have seen, but we had funding come in for billboards. We have two in the Archdale area and one in Ashborough. And we have secured some more funding to continue with the billboards, because you would be amazed at the people who have been able to reach out to us because of those billboards, especially during the pandemic. So we have these billboards up, and people who couldn't come in the office because of the pandemic have reached out to us through Facebook, they have reached out to us through text messaging, through our phones, and it's really been able to help people. But because of the pandemic, people couldn't get to us, so our numbers have been down. So we served about 1,100 people face to face in our advocacy centers last fiscal year. This year to date, we have still served 900 people. So I think that's pretty amazing, that we've been able to do that. We have served nine, 900, oh my gosh, thank goodness we haven't done this. We've had four trafficking victims this year, who've received services from us through our shelter services. We have had a 64% increase in children that we've served at Emmy's House, at the CAC. Now, as you can probably imagine, schools have been closed. Who do you think we get most of our reports from? Schools. They report to DSS. So if schools are closed, who, who's that other pair of eyes on these kids? The teachers, the social workers, right? So what do you think happened in March, April, when they started going back to school? The floodgates opened. So that's when we had this dramatic increase in referrals at Emmy's House. But we've had a 64% increase over last year. So we had 153 kids last fiscal year. So you can take what we've served to date and multiply that times 64%, we're gonna have over 200, about 264 is what I'm predicting for this fiscal year. So, this calendar year, actually, about 264 by the end of this calendar year. So what are we gonna do? Serving that many kids at the CAC, because we have capacity to worry about, right? So with that being said, we are cross-training our child advocate to be an additional forensic interviewer, because as you know, we do medical exams over there, we do forensic interviews, and we have therapy. So we also have some law enforcement who are doing forensic interviews over there. And we're gonna have to maybe curtail that a little bit due to a recent case law that I just found out about. So we are cross-training. Do you know about that yet, Mr. Morgan? So, so at any rate, so we're gonna cross-train our child advocate to be a forensic interviewer. And then our administrative assistant is cross-training to be a child advocate. So there's lots of things coming down the pike that we're gonna have to do, because we've lost about $200,000 in funding. So, there's a lot of stuff that we are working on, as most agencies have not been able to have fundraisers this year. But we are working on some great fundraisers for next year, to try to work on that going forward. And we do have some foundation grants that we have written to also try to work on this. There's some more American relief money out there, I've been told. So those are the things that we're working on. And questions? I guess this will be the time for questions.
Are you providing housing in Archdale again?
No. No. We, you know, I sent invitations to you all about the reception on the 26th. So you know that this family gave us a raise, about $15,000, to add an extra bedroom to the Ashborough shelter. And that, the Archdale shelter only had the two bedrooms, this compensated for one of those bedrooms. So that did fill that need for that additional bedroom. And I really believe with the amount of people we're serving at the Archdale office, through the walk-in services of the advocacy and the therapy and the support groups and the children's programs, that's really what that part of the community is, is needing. We're not having that many calls there for shelter.
What was your biggest loss of funding?
Salaries. Salaries. Here's the thing, and I'm sure a lot of you all realize this. People want to give you stuff. They want to give you a leather couch that you can wipe off that doesn't have COVID. You know, that can't get COVID, because it's not cloth. They want to give you a car or a van to carry your people around. They want to give you a building, they can put their name on it. But they don't want to pay for that therapist. They don't want to pay for that executive director. They want to pay for something that's gonna be there a while. That's the issue I'm having, is, is finding grants or foundations, you know, that will help pay for my people, because that's our product. Our people provide these services, you know, not a vehicle, not a couch. So I need funding for my staff. That's who I need funding for.
Did you want, you explained it kind of briefly there, and you did, you had a job. So the, we, we're seeing a huge, I would say, increase in need at the CAC. And we're limited on salaries at CAC, and so there's a big, can you just expand on that shortfall there and just?
Yes. Okay, so in therapy, I have a shortfall of about $40,000 at the CAC. For medical providers, I have a shortfall of about $15,000 at the CAC. I have no money for trafficking, none. So all of that has to come out of our unrestricted funds. Those are my biggest shortfalls. I have, and I can't give a lot of details, but, I'm getting cottonmouth for some reason. I don't know what's going on with that. But I have some, I have trafficking victims that I'm getting ready to have to fly across the United States in one direction or another. And that has to come out of unrestricted funding, because I have to relocate these folks. So, but my board agreed that we would continue to, to help these folks. They're from our county, and we need to help them, so we're gonna help them.
Did I hear you say you had four?
This year.
Was it four?
This year, but I have two right now.
Just right now?
Right now.
Is immigration affecting your numbers?
No.
Are you saying this is localized, a localized problem, not a immigration problem, but a localized problem?
Localized, yes.
Other questions?
You have a fundraiser next week.
Tell us about the chicken.
Chicken tickets. I need y'all to get online, go to our website, and buy some chicken tickets. Yes, this is our last ditch effort, you know, June 30th. So it's the end of our fiscal year. So this is our last ditch effort this year. We had the chicken fundraiser in February, if you remember. Wonderful chicken, porter pick chicken out of Statesville. $12, you get, it's like half a chicken. And, but it's a bunch of chicken, and it's barbecue beans, and it, barbecue baked beans. So Kenny Kid will deliver it. Is Taylor Calicut back there? He can deliver, or he'll get somebody to deliver. But yes, so it's, it's great chicken. We're gonna have drive-through. I got my central Methodist. We're gonna drive-through Central Methodist, but you can go right on the website, fill out the JOT form, and pay on that form with your credit card, and we will have it delivered if you have 15 or more. Or you can just drive right through and pick it up. Easy breezy.
So these guys can visit these fire stations around.
Oh, yeah, y'all. Yeah. One year, I mean, I had like 25 firemen eating in the church. So, right, but yeah, we do have that coming up. And then in October, we're gonna have a large, fun cowboy country at the JB and Claire Davis's Code of Paxy Farm. So that's gonna be fun, too.
Here's your chance to put Kenny to work.
Yeah.
Taylor Calicut's gonna ride.
Yeah, but I really do appreciate your funding, because it leads to other funding. So, I mean, that's just great, that you guys are so supportive of everything we do, and we really do appreciate, in all seriousness, we really do appreciate it.
Can, can I say one thing? I think that, that one of probably your overall image problems is you're confidential. You can't go out and say, we did this, that, and the other. And so you can't tell people what you're doing.
And I, and I can't bring a client up here, you know? And I, and I can't bring a client up here, you know? I can't do that. And I can't say, you know, I can't give too many details about anybody that we've helped because somebody might know, you know? And God forbid, we, I mean, Tracy, she's still there. Tracy, we can't bring a child up here, you know, that from Emmy's House, you know, that we've helped. We can't do that, you know? So that we're limited in how much information we can give and, you know, all of these things. We can't do that. So.
So you got to be inventive with your fundraising.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You like that? You like that idea?
All right. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Derek.
All right. Thank you.
Very important. Okay, fire departments. We are, let's see, Ula Fire Department is first. Taylor?
This is your opportunity to buy a chicken ticket. Ask him about the board. Ask him about riding the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will take an off-topic plug and tell you that I have the privilege, much to the misfortune of the organization, of serving on the board of Family Crisis and Habitat for Humanity. I am only sorry that I was unable to speak on their behalf, I think very worthy causes, and I'd ask the board certainly to give it your consideration, as I know you will. And as a personal plug for the porto pit chicken, guys, we got an order of that for the office last time and some of the ladies were fighting mad that we did not get a plate for them because of COVID. They were unable to be there. I have the privilege of speaking tonight on behalf of Ula Fire Department. I am the, despite my poor penmanship, Secretary for the Board at Ula. I live in the Ula District, proud to be here on their behalf. What we are requesting is simply this. We are currently at a nine cent, what we call the board, nine cent tax on the county property in order to satisfy the budget as well as the county requirements and state requirements for our budget. For the fire department, we are asking that that be increased to 12 cent. There are other board members here as well, should the board have questions that I'm unable to answer. I would state this to the commissioners, to the board. My understanding, I've been provided some information as a board member, and it looks as though we are tied currently for the next lowest rate. It looks like Coal Ridge is lower than us and we are currently tied for the fire department. Currently nine cent. We're asking to go to 12. And I can tell you, I can use broad generalities and tell you that we're dealing with the same problems that every other organization is dealing with, whether those be increased cost, increased employment budget, or decreased fundraisers. But what I will tell you is this, when things shut down for COVID, the fire department didn't shut down. Ula runs approximately 1,000 calls per year. The vast majority of those calls, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% on a rough estimate, are medical calls. Whenever we dealt with COVID, and I say we as a department, things kept right on clicking for us. We kept on getting calls. We kept on getting the same routine medical calls that we would get. We then started getting some COVID calls. Things didn't slow down for us, unfortunately. Hope they would, but they did not. In addition to the routine costs of doing business, we are saddled with the cost of upgrading our radio communication system. That is something that, as I understand, is mandated by the state. We are saddled with the cost of upgrading our equipment for the department. We are, like I said, a thousand-call department. We, I think our oldest piece of firefighting equipment is a 1987. I'm a 1986. So we've got, we've got equipment that I think needs to be upgraded. And I will unabashedly ask the board for an increase to do that. I think we have, as the board may be able to see from your, your records, we've been able to serve the members of the community, but unfortunately, the cost for doing so has continued to go up. We have been very frugal as a board. Some would say we're frugal, some would say we're tight. I've got Toby Strider on the board with me, and the T in Toby stands for tight. I promise you that. And there was some disagreement about whether to ask for an increase. There was some back and forth about whether or not we should. And honestly, we just ran out of another option. We, we didn't have any other options. We have got full-time personnel at the department. We are trying to upgrade our equipment as needed. We have requested and have entered a contract to purchase a new first, what we call our first-out engine, which is going to be the engine first sent out to respond to any residential house fire. That should hopefully happen middle to third quarter of next year. In, in doing that, we have downgraded the engine that it will replace and hopefully get rid of that 1987 model. I think we will be able to, again, progressively upgrade our equipment, keep up to tabs of what the county and the taxpayers expect, but I dare say, more importantly, what the state requires. As some of the members of the board may be involved and may know from happenstance, we are required by the state to maintain certain standards as far as inspection of the equipment and testing of all the equipment. And we're required to do that, whether or not there's money in the budget, we've got to meet those requirements. In order to, should, let's say, should we fail one of those inspections, we are required to have certain apparatus per station. And Ula has the main station and two substations. So should we fail that requirement for testing, we are going to be non-compliant on one of those substations. So that's, that's kind of where we are today. We're requesting that that rate increase, and it's a little different than the request prior to, but we're requesting that that rate increase be allowed up to 12 cent on the taxable value on the property tax and personal property. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. There are a couple of other board members here as well that may know the answer, should I not? Should the board have any questions?
Your, your request to increase was not included in our original budget information. So is the community aware that you're, I know you have a board from the community, is the community aware that you are asking for an increase?
We have, we have, Mr. Frye, certainly published our minutes from the prior board meetings. We have spoken with various members of the community, and I will tell you in all candor to the board, they, like anyone else, is unhappy with the tax increase. But we've certainly tried to, I don't want to say explain that away, but we've certainly explained why we've had to request that and the cost for doing so. The president of the board is here as well, but I would, I would tell the board, for example's sake, we have requested a new engine. We've been unable to find a used one for our first-out engine. The cost for doing so is 100,000 plus from the last truck that we purchased, increase from the last truck that we purchased, and that's been some years back. The problem is, quite frankly, and I'll have to own some of this being on the board, the problem is, quite frankly, we've tried to keep those tax rates as low as we can. It may not seem that way to the taxpayers, but we've tried to keep that as low as we can. And cost of adding this equipment and upgrading this equipment has increased faster than we have increased. And that's been the struggle thus far.
Do you, the, the, do you have an idea of a cost of this piece of equipment? Because it is more than the others.
Yeah.
And let me go one further. Are you going to be having to finance it, obviously, over a period of time?
Yes. To answer your, your question, I'll, I'll jump to the financing first because that is a proud spot for us. We are in a fortunate position as far as fire departments go. We're, we're not unlike any other department. I expect they're going to have the same woes that we have. We do have the good fortune of being in the Randolph Electric, a large portion of our district is in the Randolph Electric Membership Corporation's Power District. Therefore, we are able to obtain financing from them at a decreased rate for the taxpayers and a decreased rate for the department. So we're able to finance the new purchase of the equipment at a reduced rate from what we would be able to do so on the private market at a, at a commercial lender here in town. So I think that we are in a good spot on. I would ask, Robert, as far as the total cost of that new engine that we had to order, approximately, what was that final cost once they got it taken care of?
594.
I was going to say 600,000, but I didn't want to say it and tell you incorrectly. But the, the last truck that we bought prior to that was the pumper. How much did we pay prior to that? Do you recall?
400.
Yeah. And you could see kind of what's happened. And I, I will tell you that me personally, I browbeat the truck committee. I mean, I, I did to the point, I've probably lost friends. But I browbeat the truck committee to try to get that cost down, you know, and do we really need this? Do we really need that? And we started scaling things back and they got it as conservatively as they could spec a truck, they got it. And we just, as you heard, you know, 100,000 plus over what we paid before, unfortunately.
How much is the three cents, how much revenue is that going to raise for you?
The estimated levy as it stands right now, we raised 553,000 to 63. That's what the tax department says we should bring in under the current rate, assuming that everybody pays as they should pay. The district valuation, and this is probably what you need, Mr. Allen, the district valuation of the property within our fire district, 620,946,020. So at a tax rate of nine cent, assuming a 99% collection rate, you get that 553 that I just discussed. And should the board be inclined to raise that to 12%, those are the numbers that would be at issue.
So it'll be another 190,000 is the difference, is what you're asking for.
Yes, sir.
I see you got, uh, almost 300,000 in cash. I'm looking at last year's audit financials.
That's correct. Yes, sir. I, I will tell you, as a matter of consideration for the board, we've, we've done a couple or three things. The, the first that we have done has been set money to the side to purchase this new apparatus, fire truck, because we knew it was happening. We knew we were going to need it. We had had to do engine work, unfortunately, to our first-out engine a couple occasions prior to this. We have set money aside for that. We've been setting money aside in our budget, as, as the board sees, for the radio replacement fund. And that's been to upgrade or replace all of our handheld radio communication that the state is requiring. So we're sort of, I'm going to say unwilling participants in that. We're sort of roped into it and the state says we're going to do it and they pass us the check. We do have money in cash. I would tell you that the biggest struggle that we run into now, we have, and I expect all the other departments are the same, we have run into the issue of trying to keep full-time employees at the department to have somebody immediately out the door, in the truck, on the scene. We have had to get more competitive about that. Salaries have gone up. We have recently implemented a SEP retirement plan for our firemen at the department in order to try to retain the employees that we have that are good employees and to recruit the employees that we need. It is extremely hard, and I'm not throwing off on the city, it's extremely hard to compete with the package that can be offered from Ashboro City or Siler City or Greensboro. It's really, really hard. And we've had to do what we have to do to keep our employees, keep taxpayers serviced as they should be.
Have you, have you, what is your feel for the citizenry in, in the Ula area?
Quite frankly, the, the citizens don't like it. I mean, they, like anything else, they don't want to see the tax go up. You know, we, we try to explain to them. I've been approached a couple of times. I know various board members have mentioned it, you know, at, at board meetings and at the annual meeting in April, we have an annual membership meeting in which the community is invited to attend and to vote as participants, as shareholders, if you will. They don't want to see it go up. They don't. And I, and I don't. As a taxpayer in the Ula Fire District, I don't want to see it go up. But I'm torn. I'm thinking, what, what do you do? Do you let it go up what I believe to be a somewhat nominal amount in order to satisfy the basic requirements of making sure we're taken care of and make sure that our taxpayers are taken care of? One thing I would throw out for the board's consideration is that we have received a excellent insurance rating. I think a lot of what I have gone back personally with our taxpayers and said is that, you know, yes, your tax is going up a little bit, and we're asking for it to go up a little bit more. And we're sorry, but here's what we've been able to do in response to that. We've been able to save them some money on their homeowner's insurance. And I'm not going to say it's a wash, but it helps.
Of course, does it improve your rating?
Of course, we have to get inspected by the state through the Department of Insurance to determine what our rating will be. Our rating maintained or has improved over the last several tests. We've certainly not regressed or backslid in any at all. So I anticipate that this rating will be as successful or more successful than before.
Is your rating on here?
I'm not sure that our rating is listed on the packet that the committee has. We are a five currently.
So you're asking for a 12 cent versus a nine cent?
Yes, sir.
Or an increase of three cents?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And I would say, as a, as a personal aside, not that it matters to the board, I'm reluctant to ask for it. I, I hate to ask for it. But I don't know what other choice we have in order to comply with what the state's requiring us to do and, quite frankly, what the taxpayers need.
Did you see any of your expenses or your costs, your regular costs go up because of the COVID situation?
We ran several more medical calls. What, what the fire department refers as PPE, personal productive equipment. We wound up having to change our protocol just a little bit. And I say this as, as someone who was on the fire department as well as the board, as a volunteer, so I'm the stretcher fetcher. But the, and that is not a term of endearment in case anyone's wondering, but the, what I would say is this, I think because the number of medical calls has increased, because of the presence of COVID, we have had to change the way we do business as far as going out, responding to a medical call, even if it, I mean, heart attack call, we are dressing, we are protecting as well as if you had called in and said, we believe this call shows symptoms of COVID. So we're, we're having to up our game just a little bit as far as the PPE goes, regardless of whether or not we're dealing with COVID-related calls. So we, we have dealt with a little bit of increase there, but quite frankly, it's just been business as usual for us with just the average increase that every taxpayer and every homeowner's seen so far.
But you have to get there usually before EMS does. And you got to be the first on scene. You got to have the PPE. Where are you getting your PPE from? Are you, you're paying all that? You don't need it from the state or federal or either local?
Yeah, unfortunately, those are costs borne by the department. You know, in a perfect world, EMS gets there at the same time we do. That doesn't always happen. We are either getting there before contemporaneously with or immediately thereafter Randolph County EMS. And we're having to mask up, glove up, suit up as though it's a COVID call. That's been rela- That's been relaxed a little bit here as of late, but that doesn't affect the costs that we've incurred prior to tonight's meeting. That, that's been the trouble. We've, we've taken a little hit on the front end and unfortunately, as the board is aware, there are only two ways to remedy that, cut cost or increase revenue. And for us, unfortunately, that's an increase as a pair, you know, compared to a, uh, cost decrease. We just, we've cut all we can cut and there's just not much more left.
You can't cut costs there?
I am a firm believer, financially, no, but I am a firm believer that when you're cutting costs, you're cutting service to the taxpayers. And the only thing that makes it, what I have seen, the only thing that makes a taxpayer matter than knowing they've got to pay tax is when they've got a problem and you're not there, you know? And I think that's probably the same for every department.
Imagine all of these guys.
I, I expect everybody to be singing the same blues that we are singing, I expect. I just happen to be first.
In, in our, uh, budget packet that we have, you know, we, we didn't, when you were, I, I saw you wanting to speak and I thought, well, what's Ula want to do, just others say hello? Uh, because we're, we're just seeing the nine, nine cent rate. So, I guess with the twelve cents, any other changes in this budget request, uh, in the budget that you've got in as far as expenses go or?
The only, uh, changes would be, and, and if I may take a moment to explain, the, the issue was we had to have our budget submitted prior to our board meeting to determine if a rate increase was warranted because of course, we had to vote on it as a board, uh, to make that request to the board here. So, the only changes that I anticipate I see is gonna be equipment replacement, money directed to the sidelines for radio replacement, and again, in the equip, I'm gonna say future equipment replacement. We try to keep a fund to the side because you never know when there's gonna be a problem with equipment. As I'm sure the board is aware, if it's got tires, it's gonna be a problem. And that is, that is the case. You never know when there will be an issue and we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we are unable to comply with the state requirements, first of all, and second of all, unable to require with, uh, comply, excuse me, with the expectations of what the taxpayers have.
So, the hundred twenty-three thousand you got in capital outlay, that hasn't changed?
That's, that's correct.
Other than?
Other than the equipment purchase.
The replacement for, um?
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen. That's correct.
All right.
I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your answering. Gil Rand. Chief Richardson? You're up.
He was a lot taller than me. Good evening. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Staff, thank you for allowing me to just take a brief moment of your time here and, uh, talk to you about why we're asking for an increase. Um, so, I just hit the right button to go to the next slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's my first time, so just give me a little grace here, please. Um, so, we're going from, we would like to go from a fourteen point three tax rate to a fifteen cent tax rate. Um, I also, while I've got your time, I know your time is very valuable. Um, I want to talk to you about a few other things. I want to kind of set the foundation for hopefully the future. Okay? So, uh, what I would like to talk to you about is just a brief history and overview of our tax rate at the Fire Department. Okay? Where we were at and where we're, uh, going to, uh, volunteers, first paid staff. We at Gil Rand have a lot of things in common with Ula. You will see that through this. Uh, competitive pay with our, uh, full-time staff, uh, some brief, uh, budget highlights. I know you all have seen our budget, uh, some future needs and our future plans going forward. So, we were formed as an organization in nineteen fifty, okay? We fell under the rural tax in North Carolina. We were capped at ten cents, okay? That worked for us for sixty-two years. Starting in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year, uh, you guys were fortunate enough to give us a service district and we went to twelve and a half cents. Chief Pierce came down here in the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year and asked for fifteen cents. Each time we have come down here, the twelve, the twelve through thirteen and the eighteen through nineteen fiscal years, we've asked for increase due to staffing, to hire additional firefighters. All right? We went revenue neutral in the nineteen twenty fiscal year and we're hopeful for this year to go back to that fifteen cents. So, when we went to fifteen cents, you can see, um, on that chart right there that we have been very fortunate in our area. We've had growth. All right? Our revenue projections and our receipts, we have gotten in more money than what we have projected from the county, which is a blessing, okay? We have used that money for staffing, for capital improvements, other things like that. Um, with this fifteen cents going from fourteen point three, it would be a seven point four percent increase in our budget, um, and it would generate an additional two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for us. Now, you asked the gentleman earlier about, uh, people in the community paying higher taxes. That is not a very popular thing, obviously. Okay? Nobody wants to pay higher taxes. But, what I have explained to our Rotary Club, our Chamber of Commerce, our community is what we are asking is very minimal, okay? For the amount of funds that it will generate for our Fire Department. If you have a two hundred thousand dollar home, you will go from paying two hundred and eighty-six dollars in fire tax to three hundred dollars. It's a fourteen dollar increase. All the way up to if you have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you'll go from paying five hundred and fifty cents to five hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is a twenty-four dollar and fifty cent increase. So, it's very, very minimal. We're not asking them to pay an arm and a leg. Okay, so, take, take a step back here. So, we talked about from nineteen fifty to two thousand and twelve, ten cents was enough for us. I wanted to show this chart to the Commissioners because this is where we as an organization are headed. This is where the state is headed. This is where the fire service as a whole is headed. So, when I joined the Fire Department in two thousand and five, we had twenty-eight paid staff and thirty-five volunteers. All the way up until two thousand and ten, we always had more volunteers than paid staff. You can see right there that this year, we have fifty-one paid staff and we have eighteen volunteers. Out of those eighteen volunteers, we only have six that are truly active that run calls and respond to fires, car accidents and stuff like that. All six of those active volunteers are not interior certified, okay? They cannot, they don't want to go into fight fire because of their age, okay? So, they're older volunteers that we still have on the roster. Going forward by two thousand twenty-five, uh, we're looking at having around fifty-five paid staff and twelve volunteers. Okay? So, the volunteers that we're getting now, um, we still do get volunteers, but they want a job. They'll stay with us for about a year or two and if we don't hire them, they will go somewhere that will. We don't have the sense of community and true volunteers anymore in the fire service, But, the need, the community need, the call volume has not decreased. It has increased. Our call volume goes up. COVID, we responded to every COVID call that we were dispatched to. We were right there on the front lines, as you all know. So, when you talk about paid staff, replacing volunteers with paid staff, you talk about money. You talk about starting pay. You talk about benefits. We are not a small organization, but we're not the largest either. We have five stations. We compete with High Point, Greensboro, Pinecroft and Guilford County Emergency Services for People. So, our starting pay has to be competitive. So, you can see on that right there that from two thousand five to two thousand twelve, our starting pay was twenty-eight thousand dollars. That was competitive then. For four years, it was thirty thousand. For two years, it was thirty-two. We've bumped our starting pay up to thirty-five thousand and you can see we're not, we're not at the top of the list of any of our competitors. The pull that we are pulling firefighters from to hire is getting smaller. And so, you will see entry level pay continue to rise. Guilford County Emergency Services, that figure is not correct anymore. It's forty-four thousand five hundred. Starting them out immediately, that's hard to compete with. So, that's who we are trying to fight with for people. Because once you hire a good employee, you want to try and retain them, right? You want to keep them. You don't want to see them walk out the door for an extra dollar. Okay, so going forward, uh, just a few quick, uh, budget highlights that we have. Our main source of revenue is Randolph County. Um, if we are fortunate enough to get to fifteen cents, uh, we're looking at three point five million dollars. Uh, Guilford County, we get two hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, we've got contracts with Archdale and Trinity, uh, to handle their fire safety inspections for a little over forty-three thousand. Uh, we have some other revenue that we generate for, uh, just under seventy-nine thousand. And then, to make this budget, we're pulling ninety-seven thousand out of our savings for a three point nine million dollar budget. Personnel services was the biggest part of our budget at over three million dollars. Now, in that, and that's up two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from last year, in that, we've got an additional eight to five position, uh, in the Inspections and Investigations Division. The other costs come from, uh, an increase to, uh, the state retirement. Uh, they upped our percentage this year for the employer, not for the employee, and we had a six percent increase on our health insurance, okay? So, all that comes at a cost of having people. Um, so, that is by far the biggest part of our budget. Uh, supplies came in at two percent, uh, services, which is our shop, uh, fuel, stuff like that, uh, that came in at ten percent at three hundred and ninety thousand and then our liabilities. Uh, we have loans on three engines and a tanker, uh, and that came in at five percent of our budget. Uh, the other part of our budget, these are some things that we put off last year because of COVID. We had planned to come down here and speak with you all, uh, last year, but COVID hit. We didn't know what it was gonna do to our local economy. I don't think anybody knew. We didn't feel like it was right to come down here and we had those conversations with there. We didn't feel like it was right to come down here and ask you for an increase if people were gonna be losing their jobs. Okay? So, a lot of these items were put off, uh, but as you all know, you put your capital outlay projects off for so long and they're gonna bite you. Um, so, uh, we've got improvements to our headquarters station at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, MCTs, which are laptops in our trucks, is gonna be a huge step for us. It's gonna allow us to have access to call notes, uh, pull up, uh, building information when we respond to commercial structures, look at hydrants on the map, and hopefully in the future, be able to not have to communicate with a telecommunicator over the radio. They will be able to check in route on scene and clear the call by the push of a button. Uh, with the addition of another person in the Inspections and Investigations Division, we would like to purchase another vehicle, an F-250, uh, for that position. Uh, we can get the truck painted, decal, emergency lights on it, brand new for fifty thousand. So, we feel like that's a pretty good deal. I can't even buy a pickup truck for myself for that cheap. Um, and then, we have an engine that we would like to repaint and, uh, upgrade a little bit for an additional twelve thousand. So, there again, overall, our total expenditures were right there at three point nine million dollars. So, our budget, there again, increased by eleven percent over last year or by four hundred and two thousand dollars. There again, we, this year that we're fixing to close out, we were on a very tight budget because of COVID. So, we put a lot of the things that we put off into this budget going forward. Going forward, we're gonna have to hire additional staff and that comes at a cost. So, if our starting pay remains the same at thirty-five thousand, when we hire somebody brand new, it costs us about sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we need to hire about nine to twelve firefighters right now, okay? To keep up with our call volume, I'm sorry.
You need to hire what?
About nine to twelve in the future. Okay? We hired twelve. We put them at our outline stations. We haven't had, we haven't added any additional staff to our headquarters station, which runs fifty percent of our calls. The majority of the work is done at our headquarters station. All of, the majority of our schools are in the Archdale area, which is where we conduct the majority of our pub ed. We're very active in our schools. So, we need additional full-time staffing at our headquarters station as the city continues to grow. We have a fire station that was built in nineteen seventy-six, that if you walk in it right now, you will feel like you're walking back into nineteen seventy-six. Needs to be updated. We have another station, uh, on Saret that, um, we don't know what's gonna happen to it. This, we're hoping the state may buy it when they come in and do their Saret Drive project, but if they don't, we're gonna have to renovate it because it's only got two bedrooms. And as we hire additional staff and put additional staffing out there, we're gonna have to renovate that station. We also have some fleet needs. We have a rescue, um, that is twenty-five years old. We bought it used. We'd like to replace it with another used truck because we're very frugal with our money. And we have engines. Uh, we currently have two that are, um, eight years old and they're already over eighty thousand miles. Very busy. So, going forward, uh, we, we hope that this fifteen cents, if you're gracious enough to allow us to go to fifteen cents with our tax rate, we plan to have that tax rate until we, uh, until you guys do the Randolph reappraisal in the twenty-three through twenty-four fiscal year. With what homes are selling for right now, knock on wood, hopefully it won't tank, but, uh, we, we're assuming that we're gonna continue to see growth in our area and that the reappraisal will come back and be generous to us, okay? So, we're hoping to use that money, that increase to hire additional staff going forward. There again, additional staffing requires additional funding. What kind of fire service does the county Commissioners want? Because I think all the fire chiefs are gonna stand up here and tell you just about the same thing, right? They need more money because they would need to, they need to hire people. They don't have volunteers. They need to address capital needs, okay? And right now, our only source of funding is the property tax, okay? So, just, just something to consider. Um, and then, uh, I think, I hate to say it, but I, I believe that the trend is gonna continue with, it's gonna be more paid staff as our county grows, as our area grows, uh, we're not gonna have the active volunteers that we used to have. The community that we serve expects a level of service. They expect us to be involved in the community and with that, we'll have to have additional staffing. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate you allowing me to come up here and speak to you. Do you have any questions?
Some of that additional funding, Luke, is that the English property with five hundred and some homes in sixty-two?
Yes. That, that's part of it.
It's like a subdivision all the way down to sixty-two now.
Right, right. We're very, there again, that, that would be huge for us. Uh, growth is always, I showed it on, on, uh, one of the other slides. We've had growth in our area. We'll continue to see growth in our area because of where we're, uh, located at. And we, we serve Randolph County, we serve Guilford County. In Guilford County, we are given a portion of sales tax, okay? That is a part of our revenue stream as a Fire Department. And the Commissioners do that in order to keep property taxes low, okay? We have a Fire Department that's comparable to us, that their tax rate is lower than ours because they are allowed to tap into that sales tax, okay? So, I just wanna, I'm not, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm just trying to plant that seed going forward, okay? Because we're gonna continue to ask for increases.
What's the basis for distributing that sales tax to the Fire Department?
So, it is my understanding that the sales tax is based off of the rural fire tax rate that that Fire Department has set. Now, Guilford County has gone to the Service District, just like we have here in Randolph County, um, but they did not zero out the rural fire tax district.
They didn't want?
They did not zero out the rural fire tax district. So, we still have that option in Guilford County and that's what our, our, uh, sales tax is based off of.
So, you have a separate rural rate as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, so we, in Guilford County, yes, sir, in Guilford County, if you get a tax bill in our Fire District, or any Fire District, it'll have, uh, the rural fire rate, the ten cent maxed out, and then the service overlay. So, it'll, it'll have two separate items on the bill. Yes, sir.
And how does the sales tax play into that, again?
So, it's based off of our rural fire tax rate. So, we're maxed out in Guilford County at ten cents, um, and our sales tax is based off of that ten cents that's generated in the county. It's equally distributed among the different Fire Departments. Every Fire Department doesn't get the same amount, but it's based off of your size, budget and stuff like that. Okay? So, for instance, our budget in Guilford County is two hundred thousand dollars for prop, or total. So, we get right at two hundred thousand dollars for property. We get a little over twenty thousand in sales tax, okay? So, it's about ten percent of what our property tax is. Summerfield, for instance, they have, uh, their budget's very comparable to ours. Um, they generate about six hundred thousand dollars off of, uh, sales tax, okay?
Six hundred thousand?
Yes, sir. So, they are able to keep their property taxes lower because they're tapping into an additional revenue stream. Does that make sense?
So, that sales tax comes from where? How's that tapped into? What's it tapped into, sales tax?
Yeah, it's just, it's the same as y'all's sales tax, yeah.
It goes to Guilford County like it comes to Randolph County. Right, so, it's a, it's a slide over, in other words?
But, it's based on just a rate?
Yeah, and it must be based on gross sales, gross property tax income.
Yes, sir.
Instead of your, I mean, how would Summerfield get six hundred thousand and you get two hundred thousand?
No, we get twenty.
I mean, you get twenty, and they get six hundred thousand?
Well, they have, now, in, in Summerfield, you know, they've got some, some businesses. They have a much bigger area, much bigger footprint in Guilford County than we do. Our, our footprint in Guilford County is very small.
Yeah.
Summerfield's changed a lot.
Yes, yeah. They're not, they're not as rural as they used to be. Yes, it's very, it's a nice area. It's very nice area.
It's not the old Summerfield.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? So you're, you're actually asking for about seven tenths of one cent.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yep, we're at fourteen-three, we're just going to fifteen.
Which goes back to your pre-reval rate.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So you, you got a ten cent minimum in Guilford, you had a twelve cent to start with in Randolph, and now, now we're working on another rate.
Yes, sir.
That, that's confusing for us. I can imagine what it is to the public.
Yes, sir. I understand.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank all you Gilrand guys for being here tonight. Okay, next up is Eastside. Eric?
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm not going to tell you anything that you hadn't heard from two other chiefs already It, it's, it's the same across the county. We're all kind of dealing with the same issues. And, you know, as, as the county continues to grow, it's going to continue to get worse. Now, I'm not dealing with numbers anywhere close to what Gilrand is dealing with. They run a lot more calls, provide a lot more services than we're able to provide in, in my section of the county. My count, section of the county is not nearly as populated. But what we're requesting to do is go from thirteen and a half to fifteen cents per evaluation. And basically, what we're seeking to do is to upgrade equipment and add on to some part time paid staff to continue to fill in the gaps from the loss of volunteers. And, and we're no different than anybody else. It used to be that I could count on just about any time that pager went off that I was going to get fifteen, twenty, twenty-five volunteers. We don't get that anymore. A lot of that generation has aged out, to be quite honest with you. And I think that if you went around a lot of the fire departments right now and walked in on our meeting nights, you're going to see a lot of people that are forty-five years old or older. Because that generation did a lot, believed in volunteering and did a lot of volunteering. It's harder to find them now. This younger generation, they're not as interested in. They're more interested in, in, in getting jobs. Our requirements are a lot more than it used to be. I remember when I walked into the fire department in, in Southern Pines in nineteen ninety-one, and Chief McKeever brought me in to be a volunteer, I had to do thirty-six hours of, of in-service training, basically with the fire department, and they handed me gear and air pack, ominous ominous, and off he went. Two days later, I was riding a fire truck to a, to a, a fire. It's not that way anymore. We can't, the liability, we can't even take, accept that kind of liability anymore. To be a firefighter nowadays is almost four hundred hours of training. To be an EMT is over two hundred hours of training. It's hard to get people to volunteer and then, and do all that type of training and come. It's just not easy anymore. And, and, you know, it's, it's kind of morbid to say, but the further we get away from, from September eleventh, the harder it gets. We all had an influx of volunteers right after the, the events of, of September eleventh, two thousand and one. But you've got to understand, we've got a generation now that wasn't alive. They weren't even alive when that occurred. And so, and a lot of the volunteers that we got then, well, they've got eighteen, nineteen, twenty years in, in the fire service and can retire from, as volunteers, and, and get out. So it, it's just, it's a, it's an ongoing problem. My newest combat truck, first-out truck, is a two thousand and twelve. My oldest is a nineteen eighty-seven. The average age of my trucks is, is in the nineties, ninety-nine, late ninety-nine, two thousand, somewhere in there. And we, we have made a, a, a habit of buying used trucks. Quite frankly, we can't afford to buy new ones. What, what Ula's telling you on what the cost of their truck is, be very fair with you, that, that is cheap. I'm going to be very, I'm going to be very honest with you. I'm not here asking for a brand-new truck, but I can tell you that a lot of the departments that, that I talk to across the state, they're looking at trucks that are six hundred and fifty, seven hundred thousand dollars. That's for a first-out engine. First, first-out engine I ever bought was two hundred and twenty. So it, it, it's not changing. So a lot of my trucks are older. They, they have over a hundred thousand miles on them. You want to know what truck maintenance is on a big truck? Last year, Kyle, you'll, you'll, you'll like this, you was asking about this. Last year, I spent eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars on truck maintenance. Just on truck maintenance. So you want to talk about fire stations? My, my main station, Station Fourteen, was built in nineteen seventy. My second station was built in nineteen eighty. None of these stations have undergone any significant changes in all those years. When they built those stations, they never thought that we would have the equipment, the types of equipment and the trucks that we have, or the fact that we would need paid staffing and somewhere to house them. Because it was all volunteer back then. So, you know, how can you, how can you figure what's going to happen fifty years from now? And that's where we are with a lot of that stuff. We're trying to update them. We, we spend a lot of money keeping, trying to keep our stations up and keep them updated. It costs a lot of money to do that. It costs a lot of money to build a fire station. So, you know, we're doing the best we can with infrastructure. But as we add on people, what, what, what else do you need? Stations and room and space to put them. So it's a compounding problem for us. As far as my people go, look, I'm extremely proud of my volunteers. I have a core group of volunteers that when that pager goes off, they show up. And I can't, there's nobody here can be prouder of, of their people than I am. The problem is, I just don't have enough of them. I just don't have enough of them. Volunteerism is down. Is, every chief here is going to tell you the same thing. I'm not telling you anything you hadn't heard before. Volunteerism is down. Last year, my volunteers averaged, just my volunteers now, not my paid staff or any of that, they averaged three hundred and eighty-four hours spent at the fire station. That's how much time they gave to the fire station. I had some that were well over five hundred. That was an average. So, so it's, it's hard to find folks that are willing to give that kind of time anymore. So COVID, I heard some of the other departments that were asking said that, well, we could do stuff virtually. Fire department can't work virtually. Pager goes off, we have to show up. We ran nine hundred and thirty-three calls last year. It's the most we've ever run. Of that, four hundred and eighteen were medical responses. And we went to a lot of COVID calls.
Stop, stop, we're right there. That, that's COVID supplies you've got to have.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
First responder?
Yes, sir.
Before EMS gets there?
Yes, sir.
Where do you get that informa, where do you get your supplies?
We buy, we buy it out of our budget. Yes, sir.
That's in your budget?
Yes, sir.
You expecting, of course, you hope COVID's kind of over, but you've still got to anticipate those kind of things.
Yes, sir. COVID's not going to go away.
You paid for the PPC, PPC?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We bought, we bought Tyvek suits. We had to buy a, a, a lot, a lot of Tyvek suits, N-ninety-five masks, eye protection, everything. When we were dispatched to COVID calls or suspected COVID calls, my guys were expected to, to dress out before they ever went, even went into a house.
So your, your fire station, your district had to pay for that?
Yes, sir.
As in last year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Realize, you did not get help from federal, state?
No, sir.
Or local?
No, sir.
Thank you.
And, and you spend, you spend money on disinfection, disinfecting equipment. We were fortunate, gentlemen. Nobody from our department got COVID from a call that we were on. We were extremely fortunate. Now, I had a, a, my policy was pretty strict as to the types of calls we went to and what their PPE was supposed to be. And hopefully, that, that made, paid, made a difference. But you spend a lot of money on disinfecting chemicals too, because we have to disinfect our med bags, and, and equipment was there, and we have to disinfect our stations every day so that we don't, don't spread it. So, you know, it's a lot that, that went into that. So into that, that response. The, and, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit along the same lines as Chief Richardson. We all signed a new contract two years ago with the county, and that contract, if, if you go back in time, when we were, when we were instituted, we were instituted at fifteen cents on a hundred. And not ten or twelve like some of the other departments were. Ours was fifteen, but that was a fire tax. At the time, we didn't provide EMS or rescue. We, we, it was instituted as a fire tax. And now we are, have turned into more of all hazards type units. And so in that contract, it requires us to do certain things, EMS responses, rescue to your level of ability, and those types of things. And, and in certain, in, in a lot of districts, we do provide vehicle rescue and some other rescue services because it became necessary in our districts. So now we're required to do those things, and we're going to have to figure out a way to fund it. When I, when we signed that contract that night, I told, I stood up in that, in that fire service advisory council meeting, and I said, and I said, "We're going to have to figure out a way to fund this." Because as time goes, and, and you're starting to see it now, this is, this is going to get very expensive. And so we're going to have to look at alternative revenue sources. Chief Richardson talked about a sales tax. Cumberland County does this very successfully. And they, they have a public safety sales tax that they distribute amongst the fire departments just for these same reasons that we're talking about. So it's something that we might want to think about as we go forward, but it's going to have to be a partnership. We, as the fire departments, and you as the county commissioners and, and the county emergency services, are going to have to work together to figure out how to fund the, the fire service in this county. Because it's not going to do anything but get bigger and busier. And it's not, and volunteers aren't going to come beat down our doors. They're not coming to beat down your doors to run nine hundred and some calls a year. In my case, in, in Chief Dixon's case, well over a thousand. Gilrand, I don't know how many calls they run, but a lot. You know, they're not going to beat down the doors to come volunteer for that. That pager goes off all hours of the day and night now, for us. And my people have to get up and go to work in the morning. Do you think they're, do you think that pager's on all the time? Probably not. I'm not naive enough to think it is. So, and I know who I see every morning at two-thirty in the morning or three o'clock in the morning when those med calls come in, or those fire calls come in. So, so I think it's something that we all need to think about as, as, as a whole. In closing, the last sixteen months have been very hard. They've been hard on all of us. We've all had to give up things that we, that we loved doing and we wanted to do. And, but despite those struggles, every, every fire department in this county has stepped up and done their best to protect the citizens of Randolph County. I hear them. I hear them every day on the radio. We didn't, unlike college athletes, we didn't have the opportunity to opt out. We had to show up. And we did. And we did the best we could. And as a, as a fire chief and a resident of this county, I'm proud of them. I'm proud of every fire department in this, in the county that's, that stepped up and done the best they could do for this. So we didn't back down, and we've got some amazing leaders in the fire service. And I hope that, that going forward, we can figure out a way to fund it and keep it going in, in the way it needs to happen. Does anybody got any questions?
Steve, I, I could ask just the two gentlemen that preceded you, but the relationship, talking about your help? How that relates to your fire rate, your workers' comp insurance rates?
All right, workman's comp, it goes up every year, it seems like anymore.
Don't they have limit, I mean, you have to have two people in the house?
Yes, sir. We have to pay, we have to pay for the, the workman's comp. It is different for paid staff versus part-time staff versus volunteer staff. And the cost is, is, as you know, much more for, for full-time paid people. And as far as what the state looks at, look, they, they look for a certain amount of staffing at every fire call. And if you can't meet it, you, you, you're subject to be put on probation by the state. Unfortunately, we're, we're meeting that right now, but barely. We used to not have any issues, but right now, we're barely meeting it. And so we're having to hire on people to make, to ensure that we can continue and into the future, meet that staffing, the staffing levels that the state requires. So our ISO class right now, we're a four. You know, we just want to maintain the four. I mean, we have no, we have no illusions of being able to go below that. In, in the county, decisions were made years ago, Chairman Fry probably remembers, when the grants were available to put in a county water system. And it was decided not to for Randolph County. And so that has got a ripple effect, effect in the fire service all the way to today. Because we're running big tankers and, and all this, all up and down the road, instead of being able to hook to a hydrant and lay lines. So, you know, so, you know, we continue to pay for things that, that, and, and opt into things that were, decisions that were made in the, in the past that still affect us today. So.
Can you, a comics question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bennett?
Thank y'all for letting me speak on behalf of Bennett tonight. My name is Todd White. I'm assistant chief at Bennett Fire Department. My chief, Keenan Jones, is with us. I've been in this for thirty-seven years, and just like everybody else said, there's a lot of changes that's been on this fire department thing, and there's a lot more changes to come. We're not asking for a lot, we're asking for a two-cent increase from ours. But that two cent, we went up and also in Chatham, that'll make the equal representation as well as equal tax for both counties. We need to replace an engine that's thirty years old. That's what we're asking this to go for. And I hope that this will shorten our cycle up on our funds, that we can do that a little quicker, also to replace some Viper radios. We've got some that's aged out and some that's been damaged by fires. We just went through ISO rating. Like some of the rest of them said, the water was some of our issue. As small as we are and the partner we are, we still very fortunate to have a lot of volunteers. We like two points from getting a four. But it was, and that was, most of that was water. If we'd had our water, we'd have been well above a, a four. But our water hurt us on that. And what we're asking for, our two cents will be around eleven thousand dollars. So that's all I have. I don't have a long speech, so, but thank y'all for letting me speak. So, any questions?
Thank you, sir.
I got a quick question. Do you know if Chatham County, since y'all split, do you know if they have a sales tax that they supplement their fire districts with?
They don't.
Thank you.
They don't.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Kyle?
Our first thing I'm going to do, I'm going to give this notebook back to Gilrand. I know they're a little nervous. Good evening, commissioners and, and Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to come forward today and plead, plead our case.
Appreciate the opportunity to come forward today and plead, plead our case. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what Chief Hoffman just talked about. I have my old packet put together. I think y'all got one from Franklinville. Is that correct? But I think one of the things I'd like to talk about to begin is how proud I am, too. Not only of Franklinville, but what I've seen out of other fire departments in this county. You hear a lot of good things. You see a lot of good things. I've heard a lot of good things here tonight. Also, last year was a very bad year for us. I was all prepared in February, all excited to come ask for an increase. Going to go to the board, talk about all the needs we're facing. Then COVID hit. And just like Chief Ri- Richardson talked, was too scared. We didn't know what was gonna happen. We had a big panic looking for hand sanitizer. If anybody wants to buy any hand sanitizer, we got a lot. But anyway, hand sanitizer was purchased. We went way over budget and already this year, our fiscal year, and medical supplies, squad supplies is listed in the budget. I think we're now over two thousand dollars in just that area. It's not a great concern, but it's the first time ever we went over. I hope that don't take place anymore. I don't think COVID's going anywhere, but anyway, it was a great expense. Our biggest thing in our budget is capital outlay. As you know, the last eight years, we've been working hard to add two stations to our district. We had to add in the southern area and in the northern area, we had to add stations to bring people in that were, had a rating of a ten that we couldn't do anything about, not unless we had to build stations. So, we was able to achieve that this past year with the four station being completed. We got by four or five years maybe with a leased building, turned a pole barn into a fire station. We couldn't afford to build two at the same time, but when you got half your people that's paying a fire tax, but you truly ain't got fire protection, is it fair? So, was able to get that done with y'all's help. But the station is built. We are in compliance. But one thing that we're lacking is aging apparatus. We had a first-out engine, Engine forty-four. It's a commercial cab. It's not very big, don't carry a lot of equipment. The one thing I've noticed in twenty years of fire service, your needs gonna change every year. You gotta have more equipment. You gotta have all this stuff. With a commercial cab, there's just not no room to put equipment. That is a minor thing with this truck, being a commercial cab. The biggest thing on a ninety model truck is they made metal tanks. What happens with water when you put it in metal tanks? It rusts. Our tank has been repaired, welded four times by professionals, four times by us. JB welded it a couple of times. If you look inside our tank, it looks like a rollercoaster where it's been welded so much. We're on borrowed time. We priced the tank for it, and we're looking at spending twenty-four thousand dollars on the nineteen ninety model GMC. It's got a thirty-one oh eight CAD engine. It's a throwaway engine. It's not to be rebuilt. So, we have talked about it and discussed it. Just don't see the need of trying to keep this apparatus anymore. With building these stations, we've had to move some trucks around and change them into, put engines in stations and tankers. Luckily, we was able to buy a first-out engine from Greensboro Fire Department, now you, you ain't gonna believe this, three thousand dollars. They had a program where they would help volunteer fire departments. Since then, they started auctioning stuff off where they can make more money. I would recommend, I would say this truck is worth sixty-five thousand dollars when we purchased it. It, it's our first-out engine at Station eighty-eight, the first station we built outside, on the other side of Ramso on Highway twenty-two. That, that saved us a ton of money. The next truck we found when we done Station forty-four, that engine, is we was able to find one in Jamestown. We paid fifteen thousand dollars for a used engine. Reliable engines. Now, we're very frugal with the taxpayers' money. We skimped, saved, do everything we can, 'cause I don't like coming ask. Not y'all, I don't like asking taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer. I don't wanna pay no more tax. But we skimped and saved, and now we got ourselves in a hole. We got a bunch of old apparatus that I like a whole lot more than I do the new fire engines. The six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars that we, our last newest engine we got's two thousand and ten. I averaged ten thousand dollars a year spending on maintenance 'cause of emissions on this truck. I have talked to Senator Dave Craven about getting something done, changing the law where emergency service, service vehicles are exempt from emissions. These trucks, engines, whatever, ladder trucks, if we got emissions on them, I've had our shutdown on fire scenes before because of check engine light coming on. This is unacceptable to me as a fire chief. But anyway, I, we're looking at budgeting in a, a nice, used, newer model engine that don't have the emissions on it. And you can find them out there. But we're looking at spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on replacing a fire truck. Now, I keep saying engine, that, that engine, we had to move back to a tanker. Main reason, what happens with rust in water when you're flowing water out of a fog nozzle? It clogs up the fog nozzles. We was having problems fighting fire, disrupting the patterns. So, I couldn't use that truck no more as a fire engine. Now, we can use it to dump water, haul water, but when the tank completely is out, it won't even hold no water. And that's about where we're at now. We're looking to replace that truck. The other problem we got at Station twenty-two, this is the second oldest station we got, the next most reliable engine we got is American La France. Great truck. It's called Eagle. A lot of fire departments had them, and a lot of fire departments had trouble with American La France Eagles. We were very fortunate. Never gave a whole lot of trouble. But what happened, American La France went out of business, and you can't get parts for this truck. You have to go find used parts, and if you find them, guess what? They know they don't make them no more. You gonna pay dearly for them. We're spending roughly ten thousand dollars a year on fixing this truck, keeping it up and running with the repairs that's happened. Last time, instrument cluster, the ECU went out, had to go find a used one, and the instrument cluster went out in the dash. Nothing went work, so we had to find a used one in a junkyard. So, one of our volunteers went up there on his time, got it, brought it back, and our mechanic does her work, fixed it. Like I say, we're very frugal with taxpayers' money. Now, Station eighty-eight on the outside of Ramso going toward Coal Ridge, that station is a three bay, holds three trucks. We built that station, Ashbrook Construction built it for roughly a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, mind you, we done a lot of work ourselves. We had land donated. We cleared the lot ourselves, and probably shouldn't have done that being a fireman, but we did clear the lot off. The next station, three, four years later down the road, four bays, basically the same type of station. Have y'all seen it on Watchmore Road, the newest station? It looks just like the others. It's just got four bays. It does have living. That station went up three hundred and seventy-five, up to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a metal building. Serves the purpose. It's got living conditions. We're set. Our main station in Franklinville's a nineteen, it was built in nineteen sixty-four, and it was built on top of a creek. I guess they didn't have building codes back then. But we've had numerous problems with water flooding in the station, especially years ago. And Mac Priest went down there and looked at it and figured out how to fix it, and done a great job of, of doing a lot of repairs. I don't know if any, no, I don't think the Commissioner's still here that had, came down there and seen the sinkhole we had down there from water getting up under these stations. Floors collapsed. Money we got in surplus, we tried to keep anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a couple of years ago. We just hopefully had that left over. But guess what happened? We had to replace the roof. We didn't have budgets, budgeted on Station eighty-eight. A metal roof, we, we put metal roof on two thousand and three on that station. I forget how much money it was, twenty-some thousand dollars. Well, guess what happens when you got long, long pieces of metal? It expands and contracts. Screws were popping out, and they were all in the gutters, and we thought the wood was rotting. So, we kept trying to fix it, bought all new, bigger screws put in it. Didn't help. We had water pouring in the station. We had to go back with the shingle roof 'cause the metal was too long. Right now, I can take you in the station, in the kitchen floor, you can see where it's dropped that far all in the station. I ain't bringing up the fact I want any money for the station. I'm just giving you down the road. I can see that station being replaced. But we got problems with that station. We have to spend money every year on it. Electrical problems, the whole station had to be rewired. All the lights had to be replaced several years back. That was not budgeted. This is something every year. With Engine twenty-two, the last truck we talked about, I told you, we're very frugal taxpayers' money. As you know, the Forestry Service, we got two trucks through them for free. You can use it. They own it, but you can use it the lifetime you want it. And when you're done with it, you turn it back in. Now, the year I graduated high school, I ain't gonna tell you, oh, yeah, but this was when this truck was made, when I went and tell you, nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-nine. They're Meritex. They'll pump and roll, great on woods fires, brush fires. You don't even have to get out of the truck pulling line. You can pump and roll and put the fire out and go home. Nice trucks, great on fire scenes 'cause they're classified as an engine. When we done our rating, am I getting y'all lost here? When we done our rating, that, uh, we got ready for needing seven engine companies. Well, them two trucks that was given to us by the Forestry Service serves as two of our engines that we needed. And that was free, as long as we keep them up. Keep in mind, they are old. Our capital outlay plan on apparatus is to replace the rusted-out tank, tanker immediately. Next year, we need to replace, our two-year plan is to replace the American La France. It's basically saving sixty thousand dollars a year, and we're budgeting to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on each apparatus, but in two-year span. The next two are the old, oldest ones, the Meritex that I just talked about from the Forestry Service. The other thing is personnel issues. Personnel issues as far as volunteers, yes, they are hard to find. About the only way we can get anybody to come into the door as a volunteer is hopefully getting them training where they can find a career in the fire service. It's like a, a ladder where they get their training and they'll find a job eventually. But you can use them for two or three years, and usually they're gone. A lot of times they stay, but a lot of times they move on. Chief Hoffman was right. Nine eleven, there was a surplus of people coming into the fire service, and that's the last area I've seen of that. What we're looking to do is hire more personnel in the near future. We do have a safer grant with FEMA in effect now to hire three additional. We haven't heard any news, news yet on that, but hopefully that'll take place come this August. And the other area of concern is we've had budgeted before in our budgets, but annual physicals of firefighters. We've tried to do it two years, probably in the last ten years, of getting these accomplished. They cost about thirteen thousand dollars per firefighter. Whenever you buy turnout gear and all this for firemen, roughly a set of turnout gear, average, decent sets, twenty-three hundred dollars a set. That is the coat and pants. That's not counting the helmet, gloves, all that good stuff. When you're talking fifty-some firemen, that puts a, a fifty-some firefighter, that puts a pretty big crimp, crimp on your budget. With that being said, we're lucky enough, we've got eight new recruits that we're gonna need gear for. I didn't notice when I done this budget. Do we turn them away? Or do we spend twenty-three hundred dollars a set for eight firefighters? Brand-new firefighters, wanting to learn. That is twenty-three thousand dollars right there, just to give you an idea of, of how much the gear costs. Under the respiratory fit test, when you have to wear a respirator, I should recommend, or not recommend, you shall have a fit test done, make sure you got the proper mask. That'd be small, medium, large. If you're going to any, any IDLH, it was a, a, a dangerous atmosphere. Along with that, before you do a field, a fit test, you're supposed to have a physical done, annual physical. We haven't been able to do this but twice. This year, we decided we're gonna keep this in the budget every single year, but right now, last time we done it was thirteen thousand. The estimated cost of doing annual physicals right now is twenty-three thousand dollars. And this is something we wanna keep in, keep in force from here on out every year. Anybody got any questions? I know I'm rattling on a lot, a lot of stuff here.
Any questions?
The physicals, who does the physicals?
Well, that depends on the department and the board, but right now, we've looked at Mobile Doc. We used to use Five Points Medical when they was in Ramso. It was very convenient. We give the firemen two months to make their appointment, and it's a different physical than what most people, firefighter physical, is, is a little bit more stuff entailed. They were able to do it, but since he's moved back to Astro, I've not been able to get that accomplished. But I've taken that out of the budget in the last several years because we just couldn't, couldn't afford it. Hopefully, we can get that done this year. But Mobile Doc, I think, is one that'll come to your fire department and set up to do these annual physicals of firefighters. And they can do it over a weekend process where everybody can come in.
I'm gonna answer you the same question I've asked others. You had to pay for your PP?
That, that's correct. Yes, we played, paid for. I think the county brought, Paramet brought us some, uh, we was running that N ninety-five mask, and they brought us a box, one box of gloves, not a gloves, a N ninety-five mask. I do understand, that's been a question asked a lot. Yes. I guess that's, might be something I need to ask later on, but anyway, just curious.
Again, I'll say, no federal, no state, no local. You had to pay for it yourself.
Yes, that's why, I mean, that's why we went over budget, but, I mean, like I said, it was, at the time when I done the budget, I think it was eighteen hundred dollars when I done the budget, because now I think we spent two, three hundred dollars more on stuff. But keep in mind, when this first came out, COVID, we kinda, you know, everybody's running out of hand sanitizer, can't find it. We bought stuff. We retrofitted some machines to spray down station trucks. And we, you know, it has a large expense on this scare. You know, another thing that bothers us is the personnel. Right now, we only got one captain down there, twenty-four-hour shift. I mean, he's there all day, all night. At nighttime, he's by himself. When COVID hit, that put a big hit on our fire department. Luckily, we only had one case out of a whole, whole fire department during this pandemic. And what we did, how our fire department operates, I told the volunteers, "You're not to run med calls." Because if it was to hit our paid staff, I need y'all to come in. Y'all gonna have to, I mean, we're gonna be quarantined, but the good Lord looked after us. We didn't, we didn't get it, none of the paid staff. Well, I take it about one of the paid staff did. But to make a long story short, you know, the scare, I think, cost us more money than anything. It really wasn't that big of, you know.
But you couldn't, you couldn't gamble?
No, you couldn't gamble. I guess you still can. But no, as far as, the county, I know, I know they brought us a, the N ninety-fives, and I think Christie McCorkin Bill brought, brought us some, but we needed, 'cause I called and said we needed some. I think that was who it was, our Paramet one.
Gotcha.
But, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. Westside, Raisel?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Commissioner, I'd like to point out, my board was able to come tonight, and firefighters, they wasn't here last time because of COVID. But they are here tonight. I won't keep drumming the drum. Y'all know that pay is part of paid personnel. That's what we was here for last year. We put that financial on string because we couldn't. And our upkeep of our trucks, that's another thing. I just wanna give you more or less an idea. Westside just had their board meeting for the annual meeting last week. We have it in June every, every year. And the citizen asked me, "What are we gonna do with this increase?" And I didn't answer him. I don't feel a hundred percent we did answer his question, but I thought about that since then. And Westside's gonna do exactly what they've always done. We're going to keep our quality of service, you know? Whatever we provide, we wanna keep it there. I've been here going on forty-one years. Stood before y'all doing budgets for twenty-eight years. Well, this'll be twenty-eight years. But I just wanna give you, you know, COVID was bad. Everybody knows that. We went into what we call a modified schedule. We went into what we call a modified schedule. We've been fortunate enough that we have a modified program no matter what. If a storm is coming, we got codes to go by, and our firemen know them codes. And they're basically telling them what to do, you know? You either go to the call, you go to the station, or you stay home, whatever the case may be. So we followed them codes and we protocolled that right through COVID. So we was fortunate enough, we still had about twelve people catch COVID. But we was fortunate enough to do the procedures to where we didn't expose people on calls. Okay, we done all the protocol on calls, and I know y'all been asking, you know, cost and stuff. The last N-95 mask I bought was thirty dollars apiece. Once, once you use it, it's out the door, it's disposable. Anyway, what I want you to know through all this time, we still had an average response time to our calls, all of them, at seven minutes. We had an average turnout, that is the start of the call to the time, excuse me, to the time you activate, you're in that truck and you're going, that's fifty-five seconds. So that was extremely well. Cumulated time on calls, we had six thousand one hundred and twenty-nine calls. Hours, I'm sorry, not calls. Training, we had two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine hours. I didn't put it in here, but my math is correct. For a volunteer, that took him away from his family twenty-five days for the whole year to run that call and do that training. Okay, we also done fire prevention. We saw eight hundred and thirty-seven people in person. We got records of nine hundred plus a month that we have communicated with through posting and social media. We also helped out with Randolph County Health Department and the hospital for COVID clinics. We had over two hundred hours of volunteer service for the COVID clinic. We just got through it, a bunch of these guys didn't tell you, but this year, Smoke Detector Day, the state allocates smoke detectors. We picked a neighborhood in our area. We had forty-one houses that answered our knock on the door, and twenty-three of them took smoke detectors that we could put up for them. Our rating, we, we went from a six to a four last year. And by doing that, our board wanted to send a letter out to all the citizens to let them know that. We are very thankful for Commissioner Hayworth for writing a letter to go along with all that. And we got quite a bit of response. The one thing I want to go over real quick for that response or stuff, and we're still waiting back, we got over ninety people that's responded in a two-and-a-half-week period, is we asked about their, if y'all live in our district, Hope knows, we asked about how their smoke detector was, fire extinguishers, if they have a plan if their house caught on fire. And we got a program that we started several years ago. It's called a Knox Box, the Home Knox Box Plan. And I got about eight people in it right now. And I've had roughly ten people send back surveys wanting to get into a Knox Box system. But what I want to talk about is, since we're live, it's people just watching it, not here to hear it, what the Knox Box system does for us to a house is we're able to get in to your house because you gave us commission, you gave us permission by slips and papers to put your home key or main key in this lockbox. And everybody understands it, like, well, how's that effective? That key that opens that box only belongs to Westside. And that key is locked up in the trunks. And only certain members, most of them officers or paid people, can get into that key box. When they open that key box, I know it. When they close that key box, I know it. And if that box opens and they're not on a call, then they're going to get a call from me. Okay? That's how protected that key is. It's not running around, you know, you take it today and you take it tomorrow. That, no, that key is dedicated. And in our programs on our trucks, we got a software program called Streetwise. All them are mapped out, and they know exactly where them boxes are. They're, they're by GPS, and they got a picture to look at where it's at at the house instead of having to hunt for it. They know exactly where that box is, so they can go directly to it, unlock it. I've had several elderly ladies that's got them, and one took it after she stayed on the floor three days because she couldn't get out of her house. She finally found her phone, she finally called 911, she said she laid on her floor for three days, you know? This key is providing people a service that we do not have to break the door down or do damage to the house. We can get in and do it. If the people want to know more, please call the station or whatever, and, and we're going to send that to the people that's already requested it. Also, just want to let you know, COVID, even though we, we do things for Westside, we do things for others, we got, we're fortunate enough, we have an ATV. That ATV was used in the clinics that we use for the county. We also run two calls that was requested outside of our district and someone else's fire district. Westside responded to a hundred and five calls outside their district due to other fire departments requesting. So we, right now, just like everybody here, signed a mutual aid agreement with the county to run. We also signed a special agreement with the city of Ashboro and the Farmer Fire Department. And what that does is we run to the district they can't support for their lowest rating. So they get better insurance now that we signed that contract. City of Ashboro, for instance, Toddhill Farm Development. If we didn't sign the contract, or somebody else that could get there quicker, them people would be a ten. Ten is no insurance whatsoever. But now, with us in the contract, they are a three. That's what Ashboro is. So there's stuff that we do that, other than that. Funding, same old thing. Our biggest thing coming down the line, y'all already know it, and that's radios changing in a few years. We also got equipment, you know, just like everybody else. And just to be brief with you, our average equipment is twenty-five and a half years old. My last newest truck is a two thousand and eight. And so we have to juggle, just like y'all do, for everything that comes priority. So we just hope you can see our needs and help our community better, because I think not only Westside and their, their citizens, but the whole county deserves the best they can get.
Did you mention that you went to a class four? Did you mention, I didn't remember if you took it on four. But that was from a six prior.
Yeah.
That's, that's very significant. Raisel, do you know, I guess your, your, your request was not approved. I feel you justified that tonight and some of these things you pointed out. I know that the change in the rate is a benefit to your citizens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments, questions?
Something else we haven't mentioned tonight is, um, you know, what you mentioned about being out at the zoo and helping with the clinic. I saw a lot of these, these fire departments with, with people that were there working both of those weekends. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they're just like us. If we get asked, we're going to do the best we can.
And there were no, we did not get any negative feedback from anyone about those clinics at the zoo. Everything we got from people that had come from other counties, from wherever they came, was about how efficient it was, how surprised they were, how quickly it moved. And that's because it was a collaboration and we had so much work, so many workers from across the county, you know, with our, with everyone, our different departments. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Oh, and you lost, was the lady that died from COVID an employee? The lady that died from COVID that was affiliated with one of the Westside stations? Yes. Was she, was she active at the time? I don't, I didn't know if she had worked prior and retired. I couldn't remember.
No, she was active at the time. She had went to the beach with her friends.
Right.
And we, presuming that's where she caught it. Her and her friend Bo passed away down there at the beach. She stayed in the hospital for twenty-eight days?
Sixteen.
This is her husband?
Yeah.
I just, I just want to say that publicly and say that I'm sorry. I know that was a tremendous loss.
And she was part-time employee, she done all her bookwork and stuff.
I heard really good things about the work that she did. I didn't know if she was employed, had retired, I couldn't remember. But I know she had been of great value to the department.
Absolutely.
So I'm sorry.
A sad moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Raisel. Okay, Chief McGee, Climax?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Appreciate your patience this evening. As you hear a lot of the same justifications across the board. Have a brief PowerPoint, there we go. Just to talk about our tax rate request and justification this year, just a real quick, real quick synopsis of our organization. We have forty-seven square miles, some of that is in Guilford, some of that is in Randolph. We serve approximately ten thousand folks. Out of that, we have career, part-time, and volunteer staffing. And just like many of the departments you heard tonight, we improved our insurance rating this past year by dropping from a six to a four. So we talk about those insurance ratings, and not everyone is familiar with those. I wasn't before I came in the fire service. So just a quick synopsis of that. A public protection classification or ISO rating is basically what's recognized by the insurance industry. We are graded by the state, and that score is a combination of various factors, where they come out and do an inspection of the department, as well as the county 911 center, the fire marshal's office, our fire and life safety education efforts, as well as, uh, so many different things that we have in our service. Water being one of the main things, water making up sixty percent of that. Out of that, we're graded from a one to ten. Typically, a ten in Olympics or any other sport is the best. ISO's exactly opposite of that, a one is the best. So you strive to be a one. In many situations, that's impossible because we do not have a municipal water supply, and we do not have the career staff that we would have to have to accomplish that. So most departments in our arena are very, very fortunate if we can get to a four or a three. And that is something we certainly continue to strive for. Anything below a six at this time does not benefit the average homeowner, except for one insurance company will recognize a five. So we dropped in two thousand from a nine to a six. So since two thousand, we've been able to benefit the average homeowner with those call savings. And now, we're in the arena of benefiting the businesses. So all the businesses that reside in the Climax Fire District now are benefiting from that. But if we do a comparison, if we go back and look, what is the difference? What if you don't have a good rated fire department like these fire departments you've heard tonight in Randolph County? What's the difference? So right now, we're seeing an average of a three hundred and thirty-nine dollars savings a year. And that's on the homeowner's insurance premiums for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. And you see the figures in front of you there for an average of a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're going to see a seven hundred and eighty-eight dollar difference a year. Now, how does that rate, excuse me, how does that rate in comparison to how much you would pay in fire tax? So our department this year, we requested a two-cent tax increase from fifteen to seventeen. And we're doing that in a proactive state to try to stay in a manageable debt situation and also not compromise any of the services we're providing to the citizens. So if you look at this figure in front of you, if we were awarded the seventeen-cent tax rate, the home of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar value would have a greater call savings by our insurance rating being a class four versus a class ten than they would pay in fire tax. So a significant savings for the average citizen. Yes, we do have some homes in the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Yes, we do have some homes in the one million dollar range. But any of these levels you go, the average annual insurance savings is there because of the hard work of our men and women to keep that class four and continues striving toward that class three. So therein case points that many of these fire departments are saving the taxpayers more than the taxpayers ever spend in fire tax on an average year. But further justifications, we talk about our call volume. We talked about how that continues to increase. I left this graph up here, twenty seventeen, we came back, and that's the last time we were before you asking for a tax rate increase. In twenty seventeen, we predicted a five-point-eight percent annual increase in call volume. We continue to see a five-point-eight percent annual increase in call volume. Most of that, as you've heard from others here tonight, is driven by medical incidents. So while we're talking about medical incidents, let's talk about COVID impacts. Questions were asked tonight, Mr. McDowell and others asked some really great questions about COVID. How does that impact your organization? How's the last year or two been? So just our organization alone, you know, while most folks are sheltering at home, our men and women are on the front lines, are responding to these calls, they never miss a beat. Many of their family members are sheltered at home. Their kids are doing virtual learning, their spouses are, are at home, working from home, or have been laid off, they're continuing to report to the fire station every day. During that time, we had five hundred and sixty-two medical emergencies. Those cost us about an average of eleven thirty-four per incident. That was not reimbursed. Out of the eleven confirmed COVID-19 patients that we knew about prior to arrival, and those, because of aerosolized and procedures that were performed, cost us an average of one seventy-one thirty-four apiece. Obviously, we had CPRs during this time because during COVID, you had a lot of folks pass away. Fourteen of those at a total cost of one thousand two sixty for all fourteen. And obviously, we know, we've heard from so many different organizations tonight about the impacts of mental health due to COVID. So with those mental health impacts, our overdoses continue to increase, and we had twenty-one of those. The Narcan that we give for those overdoses, it actually is able to save the lives of those individuals. Twenty-one of those times, we were able to, 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 excuse me, eleven of those times, we were able to save those lives of those twenty-one overdoses. And our folks were able to administer that Narcan at a cost of around forty to fifty dollars apiece. So we had a total of four hundred and eighty dollars in that. So all in all, we had six thousand three seventy-five eighty-one this year in additional expenses because of COVID. And we did not, to answer Mr. McDowell's question, we did not get any funding from the federal, any funding from state, or any funding from a local level to help compensate that. And then what you can't put a price tag on is the mental impact. You know, for our folks to have to work through that and continue coming to work each and every day. You know, for our folks to have to work through that and continue coming to work each and every day, the volunteers that may or may not have a job, but still have the, the public servant-ship to want to go and respond to those calls and want to go help their fellow neighbor in putting themselves in harm way, the fire service stepped up and was able to continue to meet those needs. We didn't miss one call because of it. So you've heard so many justifications from capital improvement needs. We submit a ten-year capital improvement plan each year, majority of that being apparatus. You have buildings, you have equipment in that. With that, if you, if you look at it, we, like many others, have a lot of upcoming costs, a lot of continuance cost. We have a lot of things concerning us as well, just many of these departments talked about. The 2024 physical year, we're looking at two hundred, $252,000 in calls for radios. So we're trying to do some bulk purchasing and some collaborative efforts between two counties now to try to be good stewards and save as much as we possibly can. We do have to make those purchases and we're hoping for a grant. And we talk about grants. Our department's been very, very fortunate in order to try to curb the tax rates because we don't get sales tax, because we limit it on the number of fundraisers we can do because of lack of volunteerism. We've been successful in 1.6 million in grants, just for our department alone, in the last ten years. That has helped curb a lot of the capital expenses. We've done some of those regionally. We've done some of those federally, locally, and some through the state. But even in doing that, it's not enough. Our funding mechanisms were based on fifties and sixties models by the state of North Carolina to fund volunteer organizations where all of the funding went toward capital needs or fuel and your normal day-to-day operating expenses. Now that's totally flip-flopped for us. And we're seeing, like many of these other departments, sixty to eighty percent of our budgets, ours in particular, in that eighty percent range, going toward salaries because more and more folks are just unfortunately aging out and we're not getting folks knocking down the door coming into this. They've talked about fire engine replacements. We've got two on our schedule, two to replace. Both of those trucks are aging trucks approaching the twenty-five and twenty-eight-year mark at five twenty-five apiece. You've heard numbers, you know, and those numbers continue to increase because we're seeing an average fire truck increase around forty to fifty thousand dollars a year in cost, whether that's driven by EPA regulations, whether that's driven by NFPA regulations. There's things causing the amount of this equipment that we are required to purchase to do the job to continue to increase at a rate faster than we can save. So you couple that with increasing ages of volunteers. You know, a third of our volunteers are aging out. We have a third that are over seventy years of age. And those men and women have fought the good fight. They've done, they've done the work to serve their community all these years. Many of them with thirty-five, forty, forty-five, even this year, three charter members with fifty years of service, getting up in the middle of the night, working a full-time job, coming to training, doing the dedication. But they came from a different generation. I think many of you will respect that. They came from a different generation of servant hood, of giving back to the community, and we're not seeing that now. So with that, who's going to take their place? Who's going to take their place? We're continuing to see U.S. Department of Labor statistics show the decreasing amount of folks volunteering, whether that's at church, whether that's at the Scouts, whether that's at the Salvation Army, or whether that's at the fire service. We're seeing the impacts everywhere. So our department and many others in this room have a plan. We're trying to do workforce development. We're trying to get programs in the high schools to get those children at a younger age, those men and women at a younger age. We're trying to bring them in as part-time employees, curb a lot of that, sponsor a lot of those programs to bring them in and pay for those upfront costs in hopes that they'll, you know, serve in the fire service and serve in a career in, in our department or another department here in Randolph County. But that's expensive. It's expensive to do workforce development. We like the idea of it. The concept sounds great. But when you get into the meat and potatoes of it, it's an expensive and risky endeavor when we start doing that. So we, like many departments in this room, we have a plan. We want to continue to increase our staffing to meet demands. And we're doing that at a slow, conservative pace as we have folks we know are retiring out that are big contributors in time and effort in our district to respond to these calls and come to this type of training. So we've got a plan. Unfortunately, we look out years from now, twenty-five, twenty-six physical year. We're seeing from this year till now, a $260,000 increase just in personnel cost. So that coupled with apparatus, coupled with pandemic cost, and we just keep adding to that, the scales are tipping. And it's harder and harder to run a combination department each and every day for many of us. So we certainly need your support. And as many of these departments have talked about, we not only need your support now in this physical year upcoming with the tax rate, we need your help in the future. We need your help figuring out a way that we can fund the fire service, but take some of the burden away from the property tax owners. Yes, they are the direct recipients, but at some point, we're going to have to have more to meet these demands. When it becomes an all-career fire service, or in a lot of these organizations, you see eighty to ninety percent of the members being career, how do we continue to afford that? And then we continue to get hit with these costs and regulations by radio changes, by pager changes, by things that are so far out of our control that are on FCC level or a state level or a federal level, and there's no means to fund it. So I stand before you, like so many of these other men and women, asking for help. And I think it was a great quote tonight from the Family Crisis Center. She said in a statement, it certainly resonated with me. A lot of this funding is for staff because fire trucks are nice, buildings are nice, things, things are nice, but people provide the services. Our people are our greatest assets. And if we don't spend the money for recruitment, we don't spend the money for retention through our volunteers and through workforce development solutions, the citizens of this county are going to suffer because the services are going to suffer. So we certainly appreciate all the support you've provided us up until now and we appreciate all the considerations that you'll have moving forward. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Questions?
I guess you're, based on the fire service district, you're maxed out at fifteen cents?
We are at fifteen cent in both counties. Yes, sir.
What's your plan for the two cents?
Our plan for the two cent?
I mean, I mean, how to, if the fire service district, is it maxed out at fifteen cents?
Yes, very good question. We still have a rural tax district that is capped at twelve cent. And that rural tax district was what we were originally funded at for a number of years until we came in about 2012 and requested a service district overlay. And that service district overlay gave us an additional fifteen cents that we could, we could go if the need arose. So we have a total of twenty-seven cent based on how those both are done according to general statute and UNC school government guidance. That gives us twenty-seven cent.
What, you're partially in Guilford.
Yes.
What's their, have you talked with them? What's their position on, I'm assuming you're asking them for an increase?
Yes, sir. We, great question. We asked for seventeen cent also in Guilford. That was placed in the county manager's recommended budget to the commissioners. We have spoken to many of those commissioners and they are supportive of it, knowing the justifications, knowing the needs. And they're just like this county, no other county being different. There are five to seven to eight departments every single year needing to increase for the same reasons. It's the same, same justifications, just different, different names and different faces.
How much sales tax do you get from Guilford?
Great question. The up-and-coming budget, we are set to receive $32,000 in sales tax. Thirty-two thousand dollars for seven square miles in Guilford County. And Chief Richardson hit the nail on the head. You know, there are some departments receiving in excess of three, four hundred thousand dollars in sales tax revenue. So if you, if you have a significant portion of the county and there's a lot collected in your area, you're seeing, you're being a direct recipient of that. And I like that best because so many folks travel through our districts and through this wonderful county for tourism. You know, whether they're visiting the zoo, whether they're going for pottery, or whether they're going to Whittaker Farms on Providence Church Road to buy plants and they've traveled from Guilford County, they're paying a sales tax that would benefit our citizens.
That was a question I was going to ask. You get sales tax from Guilford on your part.
Yes, sir.
So you're used to that from them?
And there may be additional ways to fund the fire service, but outside of fundraisers, grants, and property tax revenues, we've, we've not been successful in any other means of raising funds to either meet capital needs or staffing needs. And we're going to need additional assistance in the future. These needs are not going to go away and they're going to continue to increase as, as the service demand increases.
Well, you're right for one thing. These needs are not going to go away.
No, sir.
Those trucks are not going to get cheaper.
No, sir.
That's for sure.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Gary.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
All right, Colridge?
Good evening to the other chairmen and to the commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity of us being here and everything. Like I say, you're staying all the way across all of these departments. Everybody's kind of in the same situation and everything. But I'd just like to give you a brief rundown of Colridge's situation. Like I say, I'm Mark Hines. We are the Vice President of the Board of Directors for Colridge Fire Department. But unfortunately, I am here tonight to request the first-ever tax increase for our fire district. Our board has made a difficult decision to request a budget increase from point zero seven four to ten cents per hundred, one hundred thousand, $100 of property valuation. As you are aware, volunteer fire departments across the county and state struggle to maintain a volunteer base that can keep us up with the demands of ever increasing call volume. In 2020, we had nine out of our 373 total calls that went unanswered by our department because there were no volunteers available to assist. Fortunately, some of our neighboring departments were able to respond when we couldn't. The time has come that we need to hire staff to be available for calls, your normal business hours, while most of our volunteers are working their regular jobs. This is the step we have already started implementing this year. This new staffing cost, in addition to some overdue equipment repair and replacement projects, are more than our current budget is able to handle. Thankfully, this past December, our department was able to pull together and maintain our current six-cent, six insurance rating during the Department of Fire Insurance inspection. However, the inspection also highlighted areas of improvement in equipment and in personnel that we need to make to continue to serve our community. It is, this reasons we came to you tonight to request a tax increase. Although no one ever wants to see their taxes go up, especially on the heels of the global pandemic, we feel the tax increase is required to continue to serve our community at the level of our district expects. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't quite hear, I think, the, your insurance rating is what?
Six.
Six.
Yeah. We were able to maintain that.
Do you think this will help maybe reduce that a little bit?
Your what?
You think you'd be able to reduce that rate a little bit?
Well, like I say, what we're trying to do is during the day, as used to, we had farmers that helped run calls and everything during the day. And so the farmer, you know, is kind of like a dying breed. And so we don't have people around that's at home now to run the calls. So, and like I say, everybody else is working away from home. And so we're having to pay firemen to come, you know, to run our calls for us. And so for what we figured out for maybe two people, it's going to cost us about what we're asking for to, to pay them and to pay some, you know, their insurance extra and stuff like that.
Do you know, how much would that increase bring you in revenue?
Yeah, I think it's about sixty-seven thousand dollars.
It looks like you got, well, I haven't pulled up, you got a deficit, looked like you'll be running because of the capital outlay.
Yes.
So you've got pretty good cash reserves, but you got a deficit, pretty sizable deficit this year.
But I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, you were asking, you think it'd reduce the rate? You're talking about the insurance rate.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's what he meant was.
Yeah, your rating, your insurance rating, if you, maybe you can help that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. We hope that we can help, help get it maintained the next time that we have to. So we do it every five years.
Right. All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Decisions on these will be next Monday night when we approve, hopefully have the final night of our budget process. And all of these requests will be, will be brought that night for, for voting by this board. As it goes forward, I think all of you have, a lot of it was repeated the same issues, which we, we've come to know that with you. You know, we've gone through the last two and a half years with our hospital, trying to save our hospital. This board has worked diligently and with a lot of different people and through lots of processes to, and I think we have a chance of being successful there. But a lot of you guys are on the scene before they ever get to the hospital. And I noticed in some of your numbers, the first responders has become a big part of your calls. So it's not just related to fires. But those first responder calls, accidents, health issues, et cetera, that you're generally the first vehicle to pull up on the scene, whatever it is, wherever it is. Because with our departments, you were more strategically located in the county to the scenes and able to get there. And I certainly say to you, that does not go unnoticed. And I live probably, probably a little bit less than a mile from Gilran station. And I hear it go out all kinds of night. I'm home some during the day and I hear them go out. So I know they're answering calls and some of you have commented about the growth in our county, more homes being built and schools. There are things that are, that you'll have to protect. So all of these things will be taken into consideration when, when we make our decisions next week. Thank you for your patience tonight. It's, yes.
I want to, I want to throw somebody under the fire, I guess. Dr. Chaney, you deal with these kids all the time. What we've heard tonight is we got to get volunteers, we can't get volunteers. I'm going to throw you, I'm going to throw you under the bus. What kind of thoughts do you have? You work with these kids all the time coming up. What can be done? I don't know that anything can, but I'm, I'm asking. You're, you're in the trenches. What can these people do?
I think the opportunity for, if I may just ask you to ask that question, it's now.
Come on.
Can you hold the microphone?
Yeah, come on. I really hate to throw you under the fire, but I, I know you're not prepared for that. But, but I think it'd be good for these people to hear.
I can always talk.
Yeah, you can always talk.
I, I think the, one of the things I've been the proudest of in my twenty-eight years has been our apprenticeship program that we started a couple of years ago with an advanced manufacturing apprenticeship Randolph. And our kids have taken advantage of that. And we did explore some fire safety, a fire safety program. And it was going to go to all the high schools. And that's something we, as listening to this, we can certainly revisit that. Interesting you would ask tonight because this morning, about 8:30, I was talking to someone in the healthcare nursing home area of work. And they were mentioning the same thing about when I said, if we can ever do anything to help, let me know. And they were talking about internships, if we had children interested in internships and stuff of that nature. I think one of the missed, one of the things that's missed a lot is a lot of children are looking for avenues to connect to that next step, you know, beyond, beyond high school. I was so, so excited to see our apprenticeship Randolph program take off like it did. And I think there's opportunities here. I also want to. I also want to publicly say to these, all these fire departments, what they do, what the, what they do every day for, for our county is tremendous. And, and I understand, I understand where all of you are with your, with your budgets. I understand that piece as well. And, and I just, I, somebody up here said a minute ago, their work doesn't go unnoticed, and that is absolutely true. We see these vehicles up and down the road, we see law enforcement up and down the road, and we also, you know, the healthcare profession has been highly active. So that's one of the areas we, looking at volunteerism, looking, but also just looking at the apprenticeship-type programs is the key, in my opinion. Giving the kids opportunities to see what that next step is. Because you, you know, every, every, there's many different avenues for kids to go pursue after they leave us. Maybe it's further school, maybe it's workforce, maybe it's armed forces. But there's great opportunities for kids out here, and we're just continuing to look for, sparking their interest is the big thing.
Well, that's the thing, I, the thing I, I see is you've got schools all over the county, and these guys are, and gals are, are involved in all that. And I think what a great partnership.
And I can tell you, when we need them, these guys are always there. Doesn't matter where it is, whatever part of the county it is, when we need help, they're there.
Thank you a lot for that.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Chaney. Okay. We have to have a public hearing on our economic development budget. These are new accounting guidelines that we have to follow. So Kevin, you want to make some brief comments tonight, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening. And I hear you loud and clear, they will be brief.
Brief. Please.
It's, it's been a long, it's been a long evening.
I don't think we're going to have a big public hearing, so.
That's right, that's right. So first of all, I just want to say thanks for your support of the EDC over the years. It's, we couldn't be doing what we're doing, obviously, without that. Our funding request for the coming fiscal year remains the same, so we're not asking for any change. It's at $334,580. Interestingly, over fiscal year 2021, we helped secure $390,000 in grants for supporting businesses here in Randolph County. We saw a little over $25 million in capital investment and 62 new jobs committed as a result of direct interaction and work that we had with companies over the course of this current fiscal year. Despite the COVID situation, we had a busier year than we have ever had in terms of project activity and in terms of product development, getting ready sites and buildings for project activity. And, and it's just been an incredible amount of activity. I was in Florida last week, over the end of the week, at a site selectors conference, first one that I've been to in, over a year. And what we continue to hear was over the next 12 to 18 months, there's going to be an elevated level of client activity, project activity. So your, your funding for our organization over this next 12 to 18 months is even more critical, I think, than ever. And hopefully, we'll see more project activity. And I, I believe that we'll be coming back to you over the course of this next fiscal year with additional requests, particularly in the area of funding for getting sites ready to go. And it's going to be really important to have those sites ready for the activity that we're going to continue to experience over these next 12 to 18 months. So our annual meeting is tomorrow morning. I will be coming back in front of you all in another month or two to give an annual report. So I'll save all of those comments for later. But again, thanks for your support and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Kevin? All right, for the public hearing. Thank you, Kevin. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, we are advising that the county intends to consider appropriating a total of $334,500 in our 2021-22 budget. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this request? We will now open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak to the budget request of the Randolph County Economic Development Corporation? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and this too will be on our agenda as a part of our budget approval for next week. We now open the public hearing for the general county budget. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to the total county budget? Any issue in that budget? Seeing the hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any other comments or questions from the commissioners tonight? We'll say David and I will be meeting with Hal and Will Thursday morning to sort of go over what we've heard, in, in particular from our department heads the other night and last Thursday night, and then also the requests, what we've heard here tonight, the entire budget process, and hopefully be able to adopt our budget. So if you have issues, please forward those to Hal. And I've been making notes as we've gone through this process and to not get the budget mixed up with the Recovery Act funds also that we want to use. So keeping those together as we consider these requests. And maybe some of it that Partnership for Children, I think, Hope has, has mentioned that, that, that would be suitable for Recovery Act money. So just things like that that, that we want to consider as what we want to add back. We have, as you know, a budget that's bare bones, and there is a pay increase for county employees, but not much more. So we probably will be building back a little bit from, from the needs that we've heard. So is there any other comments or discussion tonight? Thank all of you for your patience tonight. This is one of our more lengthy meetings, but certainly part of the process and, and needed. And we thank all of you for, for your participation tonight. I know several of you brought all the other board members with you, and we thank you all for your presence. We have our Ashboro City Schools and our county schools represented here tonight. Thank you for your patience and, and for attending our meetings. So thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks. Please be careful.
Eight o'clock at the.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah.